All right, City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Ray?
She's here.
Alderman Fisk?
She's here, too.
Alderman Brithwaite?
He's here, too.
Oh, they're late. If they're not here, Alderman Winn?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons? Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? And I'm sorry, I left off Alderman Fleming.
All right. We have a quorum. Thank you, thank you, City Clerk. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, November 18th, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. We are expecting all of our Aldermen here tonight. I think we just are waiting for one more that will arrive. But we're going to go ahead and get tonight started. Just at the top of the order, so folks know, the agenda is slightly different. I had announced that last week at the Evanston City Council meeting. I'm going to have, we're going to have a city council equity training. We have a special guest here who the city manager will introduce shortly. And then we're going to go into special orders of business. The special orders of business are related to the 2020 Evanston City Council budget. And all these items are up for introduction today. So one of the most important things that we do is passing a budget every year. And so we're going to do that. And then the last item on today's agenda will be public comment. You know, assuming this training lasts about an hour and the budget, I'm guessing, goes an hour to an hour and a half, we're probably looking at public comments starting around 8:15, 8:30 would be my guess. All right. So with that, City Manager, if you want to take us to the first item of business tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have Dr. Alvin Tillery here from Northwestern to conduct the second round of equity training with the city council. And I appreciate his willingness to conduct this training for us. And I would ask him, at this point, to begin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Very happy to be back.
Sorry, Dr. Tillery, would you mind using the mic? Thank you.
So again, thanks for the invitation. I'm very happy to be back to help you think through some of the issues related to racial equity. And so as a continuation of our last training, I'm just going to sort of dive right into thinking more concretely about the concept of racial equity. Racial equity is the condition that would be achieved if one's racial identity no longer predicted in a statistical sense, how one fares. When we use the term, we're thinking about racial equity as one part of racial justice. And thus, we also include work to address the root inequities, not just their manifestation. This includes elimination of policies, practices, attitudes, and cultural messages that reinforce differential outcomes by race and ethnicity or fail to eliminate them. And so this definition is pretty common in the literature that I work in. This one is proliferated by the W.K. Kellogg Foundation, which makes a lot of grants particularly to cities, keep that in mind, for promoting racial equity work. It's also been picked up by the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. It's a definition which they have been proliferating in a lot of city and municipal governance entities. And, you know, their language in a report that they released also goes a step further than the definition. It says equality and equity are sometimes used interchangeably but actually convey significantly different ideas. Equity is about fairness while equality, sorry, is about sameness. We're not interested in closing the gaps by equalizing subpar results. And so the point that Gare is making there is that you could achieve sort of equality by lowering the conditions of the privileged group to that of the group that is marginalized. And that's the outcome that no one involved in government wants. The goal is to raise everyone up to a standard where the conditions are good. And so some other key concepts that we talked about before, but we should just keep in mind as we move forward, is the concept of racial hierarchy. Racial hierarchies are systems of societal stratification that assign social status and/or citizenship rights based on the view that some races and ethnicities are superior to others. Racism is an ideology that links essentialist representations of human bodies to structures of social domination and justifies racial hierarchies. Diversity, the range of human differences, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, immigration status, gender identity, sexual orientation, physical abilities, religion, and national origins. Affirmative action is the policy of moving beyond passive nondiscrimination and adopting active measures to increase the recruitment and upgrading of minorities within an institutional context. And reparations, compensation or restitution provided to a party for an abuse, loss, or unjust taking of property, or some other harm, right? And so diversity, affirmative action, and reparations are the typical solutions that governments try to generate in order to cure racism and to heal and restructure racial hierarchies. The concepts are not the same. They can all be part of a racial equity solution, but one on its own does not translate directly into racial equity. And that's something that I want you to think about. We talked a little bit last time about the Stanford process, design thinking, and how when you're trying out new policy initiatives, you can move through this process of empathize, define, ideate, prototype, and test. We talked a lot about being at the stage of ideation and prototyping. And so the best way for, I think, you to move forward would be to borrow the racial equity framework that is provided by Gare, right? And so what Gare calls for in the best practices for promoting racial equity are that governments use a shared racial equity framework. They build organizational capacity through training, well, you're doing that, right? That empowers both elected officials and staff. They implement racial equity tools. They're data-driven. They partner with other institutions, again, you're doing that in communities. And they communicate and act with urgency. And so the two things that I thought was most important for you to focus on in this short session are the shared racial equity framework and the racial equity tools. And so the shared racial equity framework that comes from Gare says that city leaders must understand the historical role of government laws, policies, and practices in creating and maintaining racial inequities. City leaders must proffer definitions of racial equity and racial inequity. So that's a very important step. Racial equity, we have a general sense of what it is, but every city locale has a very different set of circumstances. You can imagine a city that has a demographic composition where the dynamic isn't the sort of classic white-black inequality gaps. Perhaps it is Latino-white, perhaps it is Asian-black. And you've got to think through the structures, what's structuring the racial inequality, before you move to address it through a policy prescription. And so that means every city must define racial equity and inequity based on its context. And so that's a very important first step. City leaders must be clear about their definitions of explicit bias and implicit bias, two forms of bias that drive the proliferation of inequities in government practices and in the administration of government policies. And city leaders must understand the differences between individual, institutional, and structural racism. You've got to combat all three, right? You've got to make sure workers on the front line are not being driven by an explicit bias that's grounded in an ideology of racial superiority. You've got to make sure that even when you train all of your people to let go of their individual biases, that the institutions, the functioning of city offices, of government entities, that there's not a racial bias embedded in it. When I do a lot of work in the South, I go into courtrooms or municipal buildings, and they'll often have big murals painted on the walls with slaves picking cotton, right? And so anyone coming before a government to do business sees already that embedded in the institution is a sense of sort of racism, right? That the ideology of racism is there. And so that's institutional racism, right? And then it boils down into the practice of institutions. But structural racism means the way that all the different institutions in the city, the way that they connect up and how they shape racial inequality and racial inequities within the entire ecosystem of your government. And so it's very important to get a handle on those three different types of racism. And once you do these four steps, you've essentially built your equity framework. And that's what I urge, you know, everyone to do in terms of following best practices. The tools, racial equity tools are models for decision-making and policy analysis that proactively identify opportunities to advance equity via consideration of expanded policies, practices, programs, or partnerships. To achieve maximum benefit, racial equity tools identify clear goals and objectives to set measurable outcomes and develop mechanisms for successful implementation. So what is this? This is essentially a script for thinking about any public policy that you have on the books. It's essentially a way to walk through a checklist and to say, is this ordinance, is this proposal, is it furthering the structure of racial inequities that we have in our society? Is it alleviating the racial inequities? And so once you develop that script that's right for your city, you can apply that to every action that you undertake. And so the most powerful concept, way to think about racial equity, is to think about it the way that doctors think about treating patients. Your first order of business is to do no harm. So any administration of a law or an ordinance, the goal is not to do further harm by creating a situation that leads to racial inequity. And then moving forward prospectively, when you're passing new ordinances, making sure that you walk it through that racial equity tool so that you can ensure that what you're doing is not generating new inequities or furthering existing ones. And so there's some great examples of ways that cities around the country have applied racial equity frameworks and used tools to do what I call retrospective racial equity work. And I know that Kimberly and others have done some of that work in the city, looking at how things were going. And that's the kind of retrospective work. What's on the books and how is it working in this sort of the structure of the racial ecosystem to promote equity or inequity? Prospective work is what I think is the work of legislators. What are you going to pass? What are you going to do with the budget to make sure that you are working toward racial equity? And so Madison, Wisconsin, is a great case study. It's not far away from us. It's not that different from us in terms of size. In 2013, the city council commissioned a study focused on racial inequities in healthcare and access to city services. In 2014, they dedicated 35 city employees from various departments, and they developed a racial equity tool to evaluate existing programs within the city. In 2015, the city council passed a resolution to focus on three areas, city operations, budgeting, and community, to advance equity in these three areas. I've done a sort of a meta-analysis of what cities have done around racial equity work. And the five areas that are most frequently targeted are schooling, transportation, criminal justice, housing, and workforce development. And so within those kinds of policy regimes, that's where most of the racial equity work is done in cities. And so that is 20 minutes. I think that's right on time. Thank you.
Thank you.
In my classroom, I control my movement. So this is new for me.
Thank you very much. So I know that there's a lot of discussion points that the council wanted to cover this evening as relates to this. So I think maybe we would just open it up for questions to begin and then try to get answers to some of the things that we've been talking about thus far.
Great, thank you. Alderman Fleming, we'll start with you tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Tillery, for coming. Can you go back to your slide where you went through the racial equity framework and talked about the four points of that?
Yes.
All right. So I know when Ms. Richardson did the social service review, she used a racial equity framework. Ms. Richardson, can you just talk a little bit about how your framework worked? And then, as we think about this slide, I know that in our first session, that my peers really liked the Stanford model. So if you can flip back there, too, I'm sorry.
Sure. So where, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. So using the Stanford model, and I know this one wasn't kind of designed to get you to racial equity, it was more of this design thinking, but how do you see, you know, kind of using this model in the racial equity framework? Do they complement and work together?
They absolutely complement. And where you are with the racial equity framework, you're at this step, ideate. So you're sharing ideas, you're thinking about, you know, the divergence and convergence between how you're defining racial equity, then you're moving to prototyping, you're developing the tools and the scripts that will help you assess what you're doing. So you're past empathy and defining the problem, and you're into the action steps.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Richardson, can you kind of help us understand the tool or the framework that you used?
Sure. Good evening, City Council, Deputy City Manager Kimberly Richardson. So when we were going through the process of evaluating the social services programs, what we did was go through what we call the six-step process, which is something that Gare has been able to share with communities. And so what that included is understanding, you know, you set the outcomes, looking at key community indicators, as well as looking at the analysis of the data that you're going to be looking at in order to make determination of if a program or policy recommendation is going to harm, or is it going to create fairness. We involve stakeholders. So this next step is to involve stakeholders. During our social services review, we involve several stakeholders. So we involve not only the external community, as we did a community meeting, but we also involve those individuals who participate in our programs as stakeholders, our internal staff who were stakeholders, and our external partners, which were our nonprofit organization that interacted with our city services for social services. And then as we go through that process, the next step would have been determine the benefits and burdens of each of the different things that came out of those conversations. So for instance, in the social services review, there was dialogue about how there were a lack of access, or people felt that in order for them to get access to social services programs, depending on what those programs were, they needed to know someone. It was confusion on how programs were, decisions were made, the barriers of how access, people were able to access those programs. And from that is how we got to the decision, well, we maybe need to consolidate all of our social services under one umbrella, under one department, in order to streamline our social services access versus it being separated under three departments. And then we looked at those decisions, and then we said, well, how do those decisions advance opportunity or maximize or minimize harm? And so at the end of the day, we had four recommendations that we presented to the city council. And those recommendations included doing more community engagement, involving the community in the program evaluation, not just a one-time evaluation. Again, doing the consolidation of the department, looking at how we fund our social services programs, so our external partners, and how we're funding and ensuring that those funding dollars are actually meeting the needs of our community members, and that we are setting the criteria for what those funding dollars are supposed to be utilized for versus the community or versus the partners telling us how they would utilize the funding. And then we will be looking at evaluating and continue to hold ourselves accountable. So now that we are looking at consolidation, we haven't gone through the program part of it. And so the next step with our social services programs is to actually look at programs and to do as what was stated, going through each program and looking at how those programs, are they actually providing the outcome for which our people's lives better, off because of these programs? And if they're not, how can we make those programs better? Or do we even need the programs? Do we see that we're duplicating services that maybe a nonprofit does a better job in administering, and maybe we need to give funding to that? And so there's more steps to this, but those were the six steps. And it took six months to just do those six steps. But as you begin to practice this and continue as staff, get to learn how to do these steps, it will be more streamlined as we move ahead.
Thanks, Kimberly. Something I forgot to do at the beginning, and just to make sure we're doing everything via protocol, because we're in a discussion, can I just have someone move the discussion in a second?
I'd like to move the discussion.
Second.
All right, okay. Thank you, thank you. So I have a question for Dr. Tillery or Professor Tillery or Alvin. I think you preferred Alvin. I know, we're so formal here in this room. I wish that wasn't always. I wish that wasn't always the case. So at the last city council meeting, you know, the city council moved in a direction that I'm not quite sure that many communities, or I'd be interested to know if any communities have moved in, in making a decision to set aside cannabis revenue, okay? And that's coming online for the New Year, and creating a reparations fund, okay? Now, there's two challenges. One is finding the revenue source, okay? And so that, and the council has some more discussion, has found it. But the second, and we've got a subcommittee working on this, is to think about how we might then allocate that money, or, you know, we've got a reparations fund. So I just, I think it would be helpful to us, having somebody like yourself who is working day in and day out on this issue of racial equity, I'd just be interested, I think we'd be interested in your thoughts on that part of the equation and how we think about that.
Right. Well, when I went through the concepts, so you can see reparations is one of the concepts. And again, as I said in the first training and as I'm saying now, there are different policy regimes for getting at the problem of racial inequities. And so, you know, some people believe that you take the colorblind model and you just try to get as many diverse bodies into an institution or space as possible, because again, under the old Jim Crow order, where we had the racial hierarchy, whites were privileged, everyone else is disadvantaged. And so the theory there, which is the theory that undergirds a lot of the diversity policies that we currently have, is that any disruption of all-white spaces is a good thing for racial equity. We found in the social sciences that that's not necessarily the case, and it doesn't get to the ones that are perhaps most pronounced in our society, right? And so affirmative action is like the next step up from kind of just pushing for diversity policies. That's where you're targeting groups, particularly marginalized groups, for sort of upgrading into the institutions. And the reparations, which really has never been tried, is a sort of next step. And that's kind of targeted compensation for harms, past harms. And, you know, I commend the council for, you know, their willingness to try to push in this direction and to try to achieve equity through this tool of reparations. But it, on its own, is probably not going to get you to racial equity. And so just like affirmative action on its own will not get you to racial equity, right? And so I think, you know, if we go back to that Stanford model, what you're going to need to do is not be afraid to prototype and test. I mean, particularly if something like a reparations fund, you're going to have to think about things like, you know, who are the beneficiaries? What are the potential, you know, challenges with the scope of the program, particularly how much is the fund going to be eventually?
I mean, one number that's been thrown out is an aggregate fund of $10 million, but the council will probably have a deeper conversation just about that as a body.
Yeah, and so, I mean, you know, what will that, what will those funds be used for? Will they be for direct transfers? Will they be for programming? I think that, you know, obviously $10 million sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, I think you will need to think creatively about how to make that last. And so the cash transfer model, I think, is probably not the best model if you want to make it last, right? So maybe models, you know, predicated on some sort of targeting of the most needy cases, targeting particular tracks. I think I've heard that the proposal is really mostly for, you know, certain wards that have been disadvantaged over others. I think you've just got to figure out what's right for Evanston and testing it. But I'll say that if you do this, you will be a national leader and a national model. And, you know, guys like me are going to come here and want to study what you do. And I think that's a good thing. I think that we should deploy all of these tools, because we don't really know what works until we try it. But I do know that, you know, equity is a sort of, it's an operating framework for governance. It is not just creating sort of one solution to one problem or set of problems. And then you've got to be careful, because anything that you do to create equity for, say, marginalized groups cannot reduce privileged groups to a condition where they are now marginalized, right? And so as we know with the affirmative action regime, if we just go back to, you know, that affirmative action regime has come under challenge. So since 19, you know, about 1965 or so, affirmative action has helped about 500,000, 600,000 African-Americans go to 150 colleges and universities, right? That's less than one-half of 1% of the black population. And conservative forces have spent upwards of $150 million challenging its status in court, because they're saying, you're violating my equal protection, you're violating my rights. And so you can imagine that anything that you do in this area will be challenged. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. And that doesn't mean that it's not a tool, but you've just got to be really clear about what you're doing, what your plan is. So I don't know if that's helpful. That's how I see it. But I do support the broader concept of reparations. I do support federal government transfers, because as I said in the last training, the federal governments are the ones that created this burden. And so.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Alderman Brithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your presentation. So there was something that you shared that I was taking notes in terms of ways of achieving the racial equity. So I wrote down school, criminal justice, transportation, and the top three that I would like to see us as a body pay attention is housing options.
Yes.
Education partnerships that would involve Northwestern and Oakden. And then something that I think we're doing now, which is workforce development based on the mayor's committee, and expanding business opportunities, something that I focus on with Alderman Simmons. So I don't know if you could just share a little bit about maybe those top three, like housing opportunities? I was really thankful when you brought up the University of Madison, so I'll go back and I'll look at that report. But who else around the planet are, you know, from a municipal level, paying attention to those housing opportunities? I mean, we have target areas where we've received, to your point, federal funds, how long has it been? Six, seven years ago? So there's a map, there's an overlay that could give us a target area that we wouldn't have to recreate, right? And talk a little bit about educational opportunities that you've seen, as well as, again, the workforce development and opportunity to expand on businesses.
So other model cities, and again, I'll point to Ms. Richardson's work with the Gare report, I mean, they've got some fantastic cases that are in there. Some ones that I've looked at beyond that, Seattle, Washington, excuse me, San Francisco, Houston, these are places where new growth is basically crowding out minority communities. San Francisco, you think about the historic African-American and Chinese-American communities are being completely displaced by gentrification. And so stopping that and boosting low-income housing has been a major priority of the coalitions working there to promote racial equity. In terms of education, cities like Richmond, Virginia, Dallas, Fort Worth come to mind. They've really sort of pressed the model of chief achievement gap officers. But I think that, you know, they're also pushing in new directions, because, I mean, I'm not a K-12 education researcher, I focus much more on the University of Missions and cracking, you know, that puzzle. And what we found is that, you know, the school inequalities track with income inequalities. They track with, you know, food shortages, hunger, right? And so places like the school that LeBron James is piloting in Dayton, Ohio, with Dayton City officials to kind of do what my colleague David Figlio talks about, cradle to career, to really provide, you know, a kind of 360-degree support for marginalized students, that's really making a difference. And so this is where something, I think, the reparations tool, if you tailor it correctly, could really be used to achieve some of these goals. I mean, if you believe what, you know, almost no one believes in academia anymore, but that these kind of one-off tests like the ACT and the SAT They've, they've really sort of pressed the model of chief achievement gap officers. But I think that, you know, they're also pushing in new directions because, I mean, I'm not a K-12 education researcher. I focus much more on the, the university admissions and cracking, you know, that puzzle. And what we found is that, you know, the, the school inequalities track with income inequalities. They track with, you know, you know, food shortages, hunger, right? And so places like the school that LeBron James is piloting in Dayton, Ohio with Dayton City officials to kind of do what my colleague David Figlio talks about, cradle to career, to really provide, you know, a kind of 360-degree support for marginalized students. That's really making a difference. And so this is where something, I think, the reparations tool, if you tailor it correctly, could really be used to achieve some of these goals. I mean, if you believe what, you know, almost no one believes in academia anymore, but that these kind of one-off tests like the ACT and the SAT really predict performance and you can boost enrollment in state universities like U of I, UIC of low-income students of color by taking just a little bit of money and putting it towards test prep or putting it toward more, more. And so there are all kinds of things that you can prototype, right? That would be, I think, really impactful. We just, Alderman, we just don't know. We don't have any data on these things. And this is where I think Evanston has the chance to really break new ground and be a model for people to study. And then one of my favorites is transportation. I talked to you on the last time about the Divvy bikes. I mean, African-Americans are, you know, two-thirds less likely to own cars than, than are their white counterparts. And it just doesn't make sense to me that there's a Divvy bike station in front of my office in Northwestern where every kid has a $1,000 bike, right? They should be, you know, in other parts of the city. The fees should be reduced for people in these communities. And so these are things that you can do or you can partner with organizations like Divvy to do to make, you know, immediate gains.
Right. That's good. That's good. Yeah, no, I, you know, my response to a lot of those things is here in Evanston, we're so resource-rich, but we sometimes don't prioritize the way we should. And so I feel like we have all the pieces to the puzzle, but just to your point, using Northwestern as an example, I can't remember their school of education, but they target our Title I schools and there's, someone help me with the name of the program, but we're already doing that, taking our kids that are testing at a high performance and giving them that enrichment every single Saturday. So something like that, you're absolutely right. Project Excite is what my son participated in and the test prep, all those things that you just mentioned, he benefited from and he ended up getting a 32 on the ACT without, but for Northwestern, I don't think we would be that fortunate. So I'm.
So scaling, scaling programs up like that is a huge part of the answer.
That we know, that it's not a prototype, it's a fact, it's a ton of data. So thank you for priming my memory or thought.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions, conversation? Alderman Fleming?
So to the point that Alderman Braithwaite's making in terms of, you know, prioritizing, so, you know, clearly, so my vision for the racial equity, I mean, definitely the reparations is a big piece of that, but we, there are so many things that it's not going to hit on right. I mean, it's not designed for the decisions that we're making up here every week. And, you know, to your point with the Divvy bikes, right before we did the Divvy bike expansion, and thankfully, we do actually have Divvy for All that provides discounted fees. But before we did the Divvy bike expansion, they were mostly all east of the train, right? So that, that if we had been thinking towards racial equity, we would have placed those differently. So I really want us, and I know it's a long process and our staff have to also be directed, but for us to look at this as we used to look at our STAR community rating. So on our memos, we always have that little STAR line that told us this meets whatever STAR criteria using whatever guide the STAR communities gave us. So they're no longer operational, I believe, but I would love for us to get to that point where we know as staff are making decisions and, you know, implementing the referrals that we've given them, that they've thought about who is this going to help, who is this going to harm. And obviously, we're not going to know all of that because we don't have every single data point, but I think that would also help us to collect the appropriate data. Because when then we make these decisions about, again, streets, what streets we're repairing, it's based on what our staff has given us in terms of the streets that aren't in good shape. But then we're also looking at neighborhoods that also are, have not been given the same infrastructure as other neighborhoods. And as much as I think we'd all like to feel like we're making, we're thinking about that in every decision, we're just not. Because every neighborhood would look more the same than different. So I, I love this and I, you know, appreciate the Stanford model, but my goal, and I know you're doing a really high level because we're not down in the weeds with the staff, but my goal would be for us to give direction to the city manager, for the staff to really start getting a better understanding, for us to work with whatever tools we're working with, for us to really think about, you know, if you go back to that Madison, right, it was kind of a long process. I hope we're not that long. But, you know, they, someone from each department was working towards this, so everyone had a clear understanding, they were all on the same page. We maybe are a little bit, you know, we can figure out how to do that. But because if we're really going to take this on, it's a lot of work. It's, you know, going to be a little slow for us all to get on the same page with the language and learning. But when we're up here, we're going to have to trust that our staff has done some of this analysis, but it's good for us to know that so we can also then ask the questions. And I think that will get to Alderman Braithwaite's point of prioritizing because we will be, we will know what we're looking for and we can say, hey, we made a commitment to racial equity and budgeting. So we know the questions to ask, we know what we expect our staff to have looked at when they're allocating funds. So I guess that's less of a question and more of a statement as to where I want us to go with this.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Thanks. And Alderman Fleming covered a lot of what was kind of, one of the points going through my head. One of the things that sunk in was your comment about that going forward, people will look at this and see, you know, and look at the data. So I think it'll be important for us not only to celebrate our successes, but also to, you know, track what we've tried and what does and doesn't work, but to make note of what doesn't work and try to track why so that, you know, in 10 years, when, you know, other people are, you know, taking this forward, that there will be, you know, kind of a complete record on what we've, you know, worked through and, you know, having both sides of that equation. So you don't want to waste somebody's time in the future like, oh, let's try this and not recognize that that was already tried before.
That's right.
Right, exactly.
Alderman Braithwaite.
At point, I was going to ask for very specific measuring tools, nothing that you have to provide now, but I'm curious, I, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. I think Alderman Fleming used the example, for the last two terms, we've talked, we've thrived, is Evanston to be one of the most livable cities based on certain criteria? So I would love to have some type of criterion framework to measure, you know, how are we doing on housing, specifically homeownership? How are we doing on these educational partnerships? How are we doing on these workforce developments, whether it's job metrics? I don't know, but I'm sure that there's a framework out there that we don't have to wait to put that in place, but it can kind of like be the guiding light meanwhile we're building all these programs.
So that's absolutely correct, Alderman Braithwaite. So first of all, your staff and just about anyone that can go to the library should have access to the, the American Community Survey, their ACS, which has all these projections. The good news is I think a census is happening, and I don't say that to be funny. I mean, I'm, there's major problems with implementing the census this year, but there should be one happening in 2020, so you'll have fresh data. But then beyond that, there are institutions, organizations like Policy Link that have these kind of indices for racial equity that you can borrow. And, you know, I, I, I think that you can also do something that we call bootstrapping in the social sciences. You can pretty easily extrapolate from the state and national statistics where your own inequities are within a place like Evanston. And so, you know, that, that's not that hard to do. What I'll say going forward, when you develop tools, the, the hard part for you in light of this fund that you're creating is going to be, you know, figuring out your targets, right? And so I would urge you to be courageous when you choose a policy area and, and to, you know, one of my colleagues, former colleagues when I was at Rutgers, Jerry Pomper, he used to say to me, "The upper classes and the middle classes," you know, talking about guys like us, we're sitting around at the faculty club at Rutgers having lunch. He's like, "We're so grabby," right? And he's like, "What you've got to do for cities is, when they're doing these new programs for equity, they shouldn't be afraid, they should be nudged to help the neediest first," right? And so I think that, you know, you're going to have a wealth of data showing you the range of inequities within this community, but you're going to have limited resources, right? And so you're going to have to, you know, target in such a way, what I would urge you to do is target in such a way that you're going to have the biggest impact.
Sure.
And that's going to make other cities come to you and say, "They tried this," as Alderman Wilson said, "and it worked, and this is where they had gains." Because those gains, they build on one another and they're incrementally tearing down the entire, that ecosystem, the structural racism, you know, in a sort of incremental fashion. So that, that's what's going to be the hard part.
Right.
Because you're going to have people saying, "Well, why are you creating this fund to shore up housing when, you know, I live way down here and it's transportation?" And so you're going to have to make the hard choices when you get that data.
Right.
And that's, that's the part that I don't envy you on, right?
Anything else?
Sorry, my last thing. So in, in thinking about that, because we are, I'm on the subcommittee for reparations and we are trying to muddle through it. I mean, it's, it's huge, right? And we're trying to figure out all of those things with, you know, limited funds and so it would be great with all your knowledge if you were ever interested. And I know you have limited time, but if you were interested in coming to share with the subcommittee, right, we're trying to do all, a lot of the work to present to our peers. So I would love to extend the invitation to you to share, you know, past this part, your knowledge and what you've seen, tried on the nation.
We can go wherever it is.
And we can come to you as, but we do, I mean, we're, we're working through this, but we're no experts, but we are committed to making this happen and make it impactful and clearly understand that we're going to have people who don't like it for whatever reason, but right, that trying to be courageous and move forward with good intentions is really where I think we, we're coming from with this. So we would love your expertise.
Yeah, I mean, what I'll say is that no one knows what they're doing around reparations because no one's done it. So, but, but, but what I do know and what I am willing to help with is, is I know what people have tried up to the point of reparations and what challenges they faced. And I also, you know, you know, know the drivers of these. So, you know, personally, and I'm just speaking as a scholar, I am in the camp of scholars that doesn't think reparations for slavery is, is the easiest way to go. I think reparations for Jim Crow is a lot easier because we know where the redlining happened. I know what county kicked my grandfather out of school in Georgia in the fourth grade because Georgia didn't educate black men. Past that point in the Jim Crow era, I know, you know, and so that's a lot easier to do than, you know, the bigger leap back. Now, the bigger leap back is certainly from the standpoint of restorative justice, I think it's incredibly consequential, but just from the program design standpoint and the challenge standpoint, the challenges are larger. And then I know this very sordid history of, you know, affirmative action, right? Where the challenges were with that. So I, so I'm always willing to talk, help. I'll use some of my resources at Northwestern to host, you know, speakers if you think that that will help your subcommittee. And so, so I'd love to be part of the conversation, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank, we got, we got one more. Alderman or Simmons?
So I, I agree with you that especially as we work on our local reparation, that Jim Crow and redlining and the consequences and impact of redlining even still today is where we can, where I am defending our case for local reparation. But I do, I'm glad that you said that no one has the answers, right? That we can all work together. And I'm just hoping that we continue to be as bold as we have been to this point, to be the first locality to get to this stage in approval, having identified a fund and being committed to a number. So definitely thank you for any direction or best practices or ideas that you can share, but I think that we should continue leading and know that, you know, we may not have all the answers, but we certainly are making a strong statement to the black community. And I'm excited about what it can mean for the lived experience of black Evanston residents.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Alderman. All right, seeing no more, no more lights. Dr. Tillery, thank you very much for coming out here and lending your expertise and offering to continue to help us down this path. Thank you. All right, we're now going to move on to special orders of business. As I mentioned up front, today we are focused on the Evanston 2020 and 2021 budget. And we have several ordinances today to discuss. The first one actually isn't about the budget and then, and then we get to the budget. So Alderman Rainey, could you move SP1?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be delighted. SP1 is Ordinance 141019. It was introduced last week, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease of city-owned real property located at 633 Howard Street with 633 Outpost LLC doing business as Estacion. It's a lease to own and it is for action tonight. I move approval.
Okay. Open for discussion?
I'm not sure if the owner's here. I know it was last minute and, what time is it? Yeah, we told him to be here, 7 o'clock. He's here yet. So anyway, but I can speak to it. I know Paul can speak to it, city manager can speak to it if anybody has any questions.
If your colleagues, yeah, if your colleagues need any of that, we have seen no light, I see no lights on here.
Okay.
So this was moved and seconded. I know the city clerk's out getting signatures, so city manager, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Well, if I could just say, I mean, this, this is a very exciting prospect for us and for Howard Street. It's really saving the day, you know, we, we did have a failure. And to have, to have a reputable, exciting, well-known and very profitable organization step up and join Evanston at two locations, one at the facility on Dempster at Kurtz Cafe, which was made vacant by their move, and this one from Cafe Coralie. I just think Evanston should feel really blessed that we got two, two great, two great restaurants from one purveyor. So thank you very much to the Libertad family.
Okay, we've got another light on. Thank you, Alderman Fleming.
I just have one question and probably Alderman Rainey can answer this, or if not, Paul Zalmasak. So with this building, have we, not with the equipment that was there, I know that's a different story, but did we, did we do any kind of internal remodeling last time?
We, we gave, we gave the owner of Cafe Coralie a loan to do remodeling, and yes, he did.
Okay.
I mean, he did, what he did was painting and that kind of thing.
Okay.
But he didn't move any walls or anything, he just painted.
Okay.
And he bought some equipment.
All right, Alderman, I just had one question. Under this agreement, this is a, the, lesor has the opportunity to purchase the building. Is that correct? Okay, they.
To be the owner of the building.
He wants to be the owner.
Yes.
I was just curious, and I don't know if this is for you or the city manager's office, I just, under the agreement, the rent that he pays on the facility can be used to offset the appraised value of that? Is that correct? And if so, why?
Some of the rent, some of the rent can, is going to be used towards the purchase price of the building, yeah. He, I believe his, his choice would have been to purchase the building outright, but we were a bit hesitant at this time. We had refused outright ownership to other, to others, and we felt that, that we wouldn't do that. But he is going to pay all the taxes, he's, he's going on the tax rolls the day he, the day he opens up.
Oh, great. Okay, terrific.
And there is no free rent, there's not a penny free rent.
So even though this is a city-owned building, it goes on the tax rolls as soon as he starts to lease it?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And it's been on the tax rolls, it's, it's been on the tax rolls. It's just that nobody ever paid any taxes. So we have a $15,000 in arrear taxes from our previous tenant.
Okay. I know we're doing things differently and most of the things are for introduction tonight and so.
This is for action.
This is for, yeah, we have two items, two items for action. I guess I just have a question for our city, city attorney. Given that these are for action and we've placed a public comment on the back, is there, you know, and if somebody wanted to comment on this, they're commenting after we've taken the vote for action. I'm honestly less concerned about the introduction because, again, there'll be an opportunity, again, for public comment before. Is there any, can you talk to that? Is there any, can you talk to that?
My suggestion is to call the council.
Okay. Yeah, I think so. So, on this, on this item that we're talking about, which is the execution of the lease for city-owned property at 633 Howard, is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we had, the motion was moved for this. It was seconded. City clerk, if you could take the roll, please, on SP1, Ordinance 141-019.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wen. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
All right. Ordinance 141-019 passes the Evanston City Council on an eight-to-one vote. All right. We're now going to move to SP2, which is Ordinance 149-019. And this is the approval of the fiscal year 2020 budget. This is for introduction. Is there someone that will move this item?
Move approval?
Move for intro, okay. Is there a second?
For introduction, sorry.
Okay. All right, and there's been a second. So, this is now open for discussion. I'm going to ask the city manager if she'll start us off on this item and start us off with where we left at last meeting. We took certain things out of the budget, or revenues out of the budget, and what your suggestions are for that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the discussion we had last week, we removed some revenues that the council directed to cease on, and then we also added in some proposals for how to make up that gap. So, Kimberly, sorry, Kate Lewis-Laken, our budget coordinator, is going to take us through a short slide presentation to overview those changes and how we got there. And then we will have a discussion on the suggested changes. Thank you.
Good evening. Kate Lewis-Laken, Budget Coordinator. As Erica stated, I may go through some of the changes we've made to the budget balancing and just give a brief overview of all of the items that you'll actually see on the agenda for tonight related to the budget. And then, of course, you'll take those one by one, but just to sort of get the presentation started, we'll cover all of them at once here. So, we did put out another set of a couple of budget memos on November 15th, last Friday. These covered some of the items that were brought up at the last city council meeting on November 11th. These included Central Street parking, video gaming, and some items related to the amusement tax, especially as it relates to Northwestern events. So, the link to those budget memos is in this presentation online for anyone who's watching. And we can, again, come back and discuss some of those as the meeting continues. Going over some of the items that are on the agenda tonight, as the mayor stated, our first is Ordinance 149-019. That is the ordinance authorizing the fiscal year 2020 budget. As we stated in the past, we've prepared a two-year budget. We will be adapting the first year 2020 as an ordinance this year. And then going forward, we'll continue to monitor the 2021 budget and adapt that next fall as an ordinance. We also have a set of abatement resolutions. These are the other item that's for action tonight. Since they're a resolution, they only require one read. These are the resolutions that establish our debt service tax levy. So, we'll discuss that a little bit more later on. Tax levy ordinances for the city, general assistance, and library, three different tax levies that the city council passes each year. And those are each an ordinance, and again, will be brought forth next week, November 25th, for action. Tax levies also for our special, two special service areas, number four and number six. And then finally, we have some ordinances that are implementing revenue changes that are listed in our budget balancing worksheet. So, on the budget balancing worksheet, there is a link to this, again, in this presentation as well as it was included in the packet this evening. And we can bring it up after the presentation if council would like that. We've made a number of changes at the request of city council on November 11th. So, the first of these was to remove the self-storage user fee. So, we took that off of the list. We moved the recreational cannabis tax revenue to our new reparations fund and Sunday parking meters. So, that, again, reduced the revenue a bit in the parking fund as well as a small decrease to parking ticket revenue in the general fund. Holding four police officer positions vacant, this has been our practice since 2017. The initial proposal this year was three, and we've proposed to go back to the four that have been held for the past three years. Hold one of the new human services, human services position that has been proposed to be added, to hold that vacant for the first year while we go through the consolidation and make sure that the new positions are what we need to serve, to serve our needs in that area. And then you'll see that the contributions to the police and fire pension funds had been added to the budget balancing worksheet. This is an accounting requirement that we show those contributions as property tax revenue and then as a transfer out to those pension funds in our general fund. So, our general fund increases by those every year, but it's really, it's an in and out to go over to the pension funds.
I'm sorry, Kate, can you go back to that?
Yes.
So, at the last meeting, right, council members opined on some of these fees that they want to change. You changed those, and then the other bullets towards the bottom are additional adjustments you've made since the 11th to sort of close the gap, and this is your proposal, so to speak, to do that?
That is correct. Yes, the budget balancing worksheet, as it has been included, gets us back to a balanced general fund budget.
Okay.
So, again, that can be further discussed, those changes that have been made.
And we'll get to that. Alderman Rainey, I had a question or comment?
Could you tell me what the social service person is that's not going to be added? What the position is?
Sure. So, what's been proposed at the moment is the community health specialist. But again, that can continue to be discussed, and we've already had some internal discussions about that, so we can continue that conversation.
And that person does what?
I'll jump in on that one. So, in discussions with Kimberly, and maybe she wants to speak to this, with the new promotion of Ike, there's other positions in the department that are left vacant that other people will be moving up into. So, I imagine that by the time the next person gets promoted and then these new positions get filled, we're probably going to achieve these savings over the course of the year anyway with just the vacancy rate. But Kimberly had a different suggestion for one, one position that would be vacant if a person in, currently in that were to be promoted into the position that Ike vacated in order to take the director position. So, that's a long, complicated mess of way of saying that we anticipate somebody's promotion will create a separate vacancy that may make more sense to keep, to hold vacant than anything that's proposing to be added for next year's budget.
Okay. I almost sort of understand what you're saying.
Perfect.
No, I do.
And how much money was that? Do you remember, like, estimate what that was for that item?
With salary and benefits, it was $100,000.
Hundred, okay, great. Okay, Kate.
Thank you.
Sure. So, the total proposed budget that was included in the full budget document that went out in October was $317 million. Today, the ordinance that you see in front of you for the 2020 budget is this $320,709. So, this is an expense increase of $3.4 million. This comes from implementing the budget balancing worksheet, including most of the items that I, that I mentioned before. A large portion of these is, again, implementing those pension increases into our general fund. So, the next couple of slides, just break that down a little bit and show where we're getting that $3.4 million increase from. So, this is a, you know, a whole series of a big math equation showing what's happening in the general fund. So, our expenses in the general fund from the initial proposed budget are actually decreasing. Again, these are all detailed in the budget balancing worksheet, so I'd encourage you to look at the detail on that side. But this is just highlighting what some of those major items are. Again, we're going up 1.6 from the, from the pensions being added to the general fund, up a little bit for police overtime, Elm tree inoculation, some of these other expenses that have been included. And then going down from moving the expenses out to the separate human services fund as well as moving expenses into our motor fuel tax fund. So, our net expense change on the general fund is a decrease of $769,000. On the revenue side, we're seeing revenue increase by $744,000. That gets us, again, to a balanced general fund for 2020. Looking at all of the funds total, when we see the general fund go down, we, of course, see some of the other funds go up as they took some of those expenses from the general fund. So, the human services fund, we see that budget increase to take the expenses that were moved out. Same with the motor fuel tax fund. Reparations fund newly created, of course, we've budgeted that at $250,000, and that will be, again, supported by the recreational cannabis tax revenue for next year. The emergency telephone fund and equipment replacement fund also had small increases that were shown on the budget balancing worksheet. So, that's what gets us to the $3.4 million increase in our all-funds budget.
Stay right there. Alderman Ruth Simmons and Alderman Rainey.
Just clarification on how we fund each of these accounts. If the projected revenue is above whatever we projected at, then it, there's no cap on it. So, for example, on the reparation fund, if it, you know, generates $400,000, 100% of that goes into that line item.
Sure. Yep, yep, that would be correct. And if a fund, your budget, the budget resolution that you'll pass this year says how much of we can spend in expenses per fund, it doesn't say revenues. And then, of course, we pass the budget amendment to adjust those expense limits either during the year or after the year has ended, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I want to have a conversation about the adult cannabis 6% revenue being generated as of January 1st. I mean, the only thing we're waiting for is the extra 3%. So, the, I don't know, I know we don't know how much adult cannabis is going to be sold. But, so, I've asked city manager today to figure out a way, and I'm certain that the tax on adult, on recreational cannabis and medical marijuana is going to have to be separated by the state when they collect that. I just can't believe they're, they're going to co-mingle those two taxes, even though it's both 6% at this time. So, I'd like to see us somehow or another get in touch with the state revenuers and figure that out, how that's, what that's going to look like. And also, I sent a memo to the city manager, I don't know how many people I sent that to, where the veto session did produce a change in when the tax was going to be remitted to the cities, and that went from September 1st to July 1st. And that has nothing to do with them wanting to withhold it, they just couldn't get their act together sooner than that, so.
City manager, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to add, Alderman Rainey is correct. There was a change to the retailer's tax, cannabis retailer's tax in the veto session last week. Originally, it was not going to be a lot available for us to start collecting tax on that until September 1, but the legislature moved it back to July 1. So, the first six months of cannabis sales will not have the 3% that we're proposing retailer's tax applied to it. Starting July 1, that tax will be applied, and we will be able to collect that, and we will start receiving it somewhere around September, I believe. So, that's, we still are not changing our projection on that. We had projected, what we had projected knowing that there was this sort of glitch in the law that wasn't going to allow us to receive a full year's cannabis retailer's tax on sales. But we also know that the city has authorized up to three dispensaries to be opening in the city. And now, we don't know if there's going to be three open next year. We know for sure that there's going to be one next year. There may be additional ones that open throughout the course of the year. So, we're comfortable leaving the projection at 250,000, knowing that we're only going to get six months of revenue out of that. Of course, additionally, regular sales tax will apply to sales. But I'm not following the 6% that Alderman Rainey is speaking to, so maybe we should get Corporation Council to clarify that.
Oh, now or later? I mean, I don't know how we're going to divide it up now.
I don't know. Just, yeah, good evening, mayor and member. The 6% is the current tax on the medical marijuana right now. And I think they are closing for that purpose. I think they have changed the name and all that, so it would be all for recreational purpose starting January 1. So, for the first three months, as Erica mentioned, we would have the sales tax and all that starting January, and the first payment would come after three months, which is April. And then the, our local cannabis tax would be effective June, July 1, and which we would get sometime in September.
I got it. So, you were saying that you wanted to, in addition to the cannabis retailer's tax, move the medical marijuana tax into the reparations fund as well?
Absolutely not. No, 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 no.
Okay, what are you saying? I won't speak for you. Tell me what you're saying.
Only, only, only cannabis tax, only the 6% on cannabis tax.
It's 3%.
No, no, it's going to be 6 on January 1. They're going to be taxing medical, cannabis, recreational marijuana.
Yeah, the state is proposing a 20-plus percent tax, but the city will not receive that.
Will not get, and when, when medical marijuana is sold, we get no rebate on the taxes on that?
No, we do get tax on medical marijuana, which is already built into the general fund. We've been getting it for years. But we, that will not change as of January 1.
I'm not sure that, I, I'll read, I'm not sure that. I want to, I want to know when people go into, when people go into the recreational marijuana stores that aren't selling any medical cannabis, and they might not be at all, there's not going to be any tax on that?
No, that will be 3% as the city is going to...
No, no, I mean on January 1.
January 1?
Or maybe SP2 for a while.
No. Only sales tax. They would pay the 10.25% sales tax, Evanston. And starting July 1, they would pay 10.25 plus 3%, plus state tax. Yeah, the state has a lot bigger tax, I mean, once it becomes a fact.
The state tax will be on there, January 1, which the majority of that is going into this fund that, a portion of it will be diverted back to localities for, you know, education, prevention, things like that. But we don't have any, we don't have the say in how that is directed. We have to conform to the state's guidelines for how to spend that money.
I would like us to get something more definitive other than what we think. I mean, I think all of you are probably much smarter than anybody at the state, but I would still like to see something out of the state indicating that there's absolutely no tax going to be paid on recreational marijuana starting on January 1, other than a regular sales tax.
What I was saying was, there will be a tax applied.
Right.
It will be more than 20%, but that will not be the municipality's portion.
We will not get any of it.
We will get some of it returned to us, but it is earmarked for things like drug prevention, education, you know, things like that.
I, show it to me and write it.
Sure, sure.
We'll deal with that when we get it.
Okay. But just so everybody's clear, the decision of the council in terms of the reparations fund was to take the tax, and if the council passes it at 3%, it's the 3% tax for recreational marijuana that'll go into the reparations fund.
Our intention was, I'll tell you what our intention was, to get all the taxes placed on recreational marijuana, whatever it is. I also have another question. We have a 750-foot, I don't know, distance from certain things like schools, right? So, Howard Street, Howard Street happens to be 750 feet from some schools in Chicago, okay? So, we can't have in certain areas on Howard Street any kind of cannabis sales. However, Chicago's distance is 500 feet. Chicago on their side of Howard Street can have cannabis retail. But we can't because of their schools. But they can because of their schools, because their distance is 500. I would like us to change that ruling so that we are not being penalized because Chicago has schools within 750 feet, but not 500 feet. That's just plain wrong.
That'd be supportive of that.
The circles, the circles on Howard Street, we looked at today, and they're, they're on Howard Street.
Can you guys hear me?
No.
No?
Just take Alderman.
Okay. Better?
There you go.
So, Alderman, the 750 feet was based on feedback that the staff received at the council meeting. If the council seeks to change the distancing requirement, we can.
Can I ask you a question? Do we, does the council have to change it citywide, or could they say on Howard Street it's within 500 feet?
No, citywide.
If you would like to make that referral to, tonight, we can, we can circle back with staff and see if that would need to go back through plan commission or what the process would be to update that.
I would like my colleagues to think about all the vacant stores on the Chicago side of Howard Street. I can tell you exactly what's going to be in a few of them. And we're, we're going to be banned from having any. we're, we're going to be banned from having any, because, I'm making the referral.
Clerk Reed, I thought had a good suggestion. I don't know if we could pull it off, by making it Evanston schools. Seven, has to be within 750 feet of Evanston schools. Not going to fly? I liked it, though. All right. All right, I thought that was clever, Clerk Reed. All right. Okay, Alderman Braithwaite.
Just a quick, and so, I thought I understood everything, so maybe, at the appropriate time, I would like to see just the breakout of both different revenues and when they're going to be timed. You know, one of the concerns, I've had a number of conversations with our current dispensary owner, and he projects that there will be an impact, there are going to be long lines. It's like imagining if there was just one bar in Evanston, or one place to buy liquor, we're going to see the line. So, I just want to make sure that we're, I don't know how to project, but we should be able to predict that there are going to be long lines and some type of impact to any location where we open a dispensary. So, just that we have somewhere to grab money, whether it's additional police overtime, staff, cleaning up the trash, I don't know, but we would be foolish not to predict and put something aside. So, when it comes, we're prepared, so our neighborhoods are not adversely impacted.
I believe in my discussions with them, they are aware and are preparing for that, and I think they have off-site locations where they will be shuttling people in if there is overflow. So, I will reach out to them again this week and next week, and see what their plans are, and see if they would potentially come to the council and discuss it, or send us an email with their plans.
And have we done, I'm sorry, have we done a whole analysis of the fact, like, the state is giving out, as I understand it, what, 75 state licenses for recreational marijuana? I thought it was 75, but maybe it's, I think it's valuable for us, now that we've got the zoning done, and I don't know if we've done this as a city, to actually, you know, make sure we understand the state law, and then how we are going to figure out who the three, if we have three dispensaries in Evanston, how those are being, how those being selected, and what role we get to play in that. I just think we need to do a lot more digging here on a lot of these issues that are coming up, and I think that would be a good thing for the staff to look into, if they could.
Sure, we can put that on a future agenda. They're, just a brief overview, that the existing dispensaries that serve the medical population were all given one additional license. Where they choose to locate that additional license is up to them. So far, there, none of those existing ones are interested in expanding into Evanston. When the next level of, or next tranche of licenses are distributed in May, there may be some interest from the next round of folks coming into Evanston. And at that point, anybody would have to apply for the special use process, that would come to City Council for discussion and approval. So, probably, I would say, in the spring, we could have a larger conversation about what the larger rollout of this looks like, and how the council can participate in the discussion moving forward. So, that would be my suggestion.
So, we're allowing anyone at this time that's applying for a state license to cite a location here in Evanston, as long as it applies to our zoning, where they may want to locate, is that correct? And then, once the state determines who's going to receive these licenses, there may be more than just, you know, three that said, hey, I'm going to have a place in Evanston, and then we're going to have to have some criteria, right, to say, okay, these are the three that get to be in Evanston, and seven others that got a license from the state aren't.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
The council didn't set a cap. You discussed a cap, but.
Because I keep hearing three, and I thought, okay.
That's initially the part of consideration, but you set up these buffers in such a way that there, it limits the number that are available.
Okay.
I thought the cap was put on as part of the plan discussion, plan, planning, or, yeah, Plan Commission.
I thought we voted on that.
Yeah.
Just as a point of information.
We'll double check.
Yeah, let's dig deeper on this whole thing, and then, and then come back and look at the state licenses and how that all works. Alderman Simmons and Fleming.
Oh, regarding Alderman Braithwaite, the comment about the, like, expected lines, and if we could not necessarily budget for that, but have an expectation of the operator to have a plan, like, they might come through DAPR, or whichever one of our committees, where they have an action plan on how they will manage traffic, and that be approved by staff and police and fire, and whoever else needs to be involved in that conversation, and not necessarily take on that additional cost burden for our personnel. Yes?
Absolutely. Good point. All right, excellent point. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, so I know we're talking about the 3% tax as the maximum. Do we know what the, well, SCOKI, I know, is moving forward with a cannabis dispensary. Do we know what their tax is? I don't, I mean, I'd love to get the 3%, but I also don't want to get us to the point where no one comes here because our tax is too high, so just, have we looked at?
Well, they're going to come.
I mean, I'm sure they are, but have we looked at, because in everything else, I read memos that talk about what other municipalities are doing. So, I'm just interested to see what SCOKI is doing for their tax. Does anyone know?
All right, we could look into that.
Tom knows. 3%, all right, thank you. Alderman suffered and said 3%.
Okay. All right, Kate, anything else on your presentation? Let's.
Yes, a couple more slides. So, I'm going to skip ahead to the end of the tax levy slides here, and then I'll come back and walk through each of them individually. So, this is our overview, sort of, of the overall tax levy, and again, what has been proposed to change. That 10.9% number is what you've been seeing since we proposed the budget in October. 13.1% is once we add all of the loss factors onto those tax levies. Again, the county allows the addition of a 3% loss factor onto all of the levies to account for collection losses, not collecting up to the full percent. So, 10.9% is the increase overall. You can see how that's broken down by each of the net levies, which are an individual ordinance. So, to go through each of those, so the first of our tax levy ordinances is 136019. This is the city's tax levy for $34 million. This is our largest tax levy. This covers the general fund, human services fund, and you can see, as we've proposed, general fund will go down, human services fund will come into existence, an increase overall. The solid waste fund has also been proposed to increase. This is the last of three annual increases that were, that were proposed in 2017. And then, again, the increases to the police and fire pension fund. The other two tax levies that you'll see tonight are for the general assistance fund. This is, again, a separate levy that goes directly to that fund for that function. That's been proposed to increase the net levy by $180,000. That's a 20% increase. The library net levy has also been proposed to increase by $502,000. This was approved by the Evanston Library Board a week or two ago, so this is that proposal coming forth to you through this tax levy for introduction tonight. The debt service levy works a little bit differently than those three I just mentioned. So, the county automatically levies the amounts required to pay for our debt service, based on the outstanding general obligation bonds that we have. So, every year, instead of passing a debt service tax levy, we pass abatement resolutions. And what these resolutions do are, they reduce the amount that the county will levy for each of our bonds. So, that's why there are 15 different resolutions. They each apply to one of our outstanding bond issues. As stated in the memo on this topic, you can approve those all in one motion, and they are all presented, sort of, as one item on the agenda. So, these are resolutions, I think, 100 through 115. The total debt service that the city will pay in 2020 is $18.7 million. That's on our general obligation bonds. We propose to abate 5.7 million of that. That's primarily through our water sewer and TIF funds, and the detail of all of that is, again, spelled out in the memo. And that brings our net levy to $13 million, which is an increase of 1.7 million from last year's net levy. And that also, I'm sorry, also includes the library debt service. In this area, the library and city get levied together, so the abatements also come together for that. And then, just to highlight some of the other revenue items that you are seeing on the agenda, again, these are almost all included in the budget balancing worksheet. You'll also see tax levies for the special service areas, number four and number six. There's detail in the packet about each of those. The items, and then, some other items that are included in the budget balancing worksheet, the recreational cannabis tax, as we've already been discussing. So, that item will come up for further discussion. Parking fine realignment and standardization, a new administrative tow penalty, fire department incident cost recovery, and again, our increase in the amusement tax from 4% to 5%. So, each of these has been proposed. You've talked about them before, and now we're bringing forward the ordinances. These will all be for introduction today, and then come back for action next week. And that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right, I have a couple, oh, see, there's another question. Do you want to take that before?
I do have a question for Kate, yeah. Can you just clarify, when you went over the, I think it was the solid waste levy?
Mm-hmm.
There was an increase of, whatever, it was pretty high, 62.5. Can you, I know we always do, where we increase, I think sewer, or increase water and decrease sewer, so does that levy account for that as well? Just so people don't see that and think that their bill's going to go up 62.5%.
Sure, yep. So, this is completely separate. So, the water and sewer funds do not receive any property tax revenue. The solid waste fund, it was decided three years ago that instead of increasing that rate at that time, we would implement these three increases over three years. So, this is the last of those. You are correct that this year, though, sewer rate has decreased, the water rate has increased, the net impact to an Evanston resident is neutral on your bill.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. City manager, interim city manager?
All right, so, just had a couple of things that we had talked about last week that I wasn't, I don't have total clarity on as far as how we move forward. I did want to note that the funding resolution for reparations will be on the agenda for next week, the 25th. So, if there was, and next week, we have a very full agenda. I'm trying my best to manage the chockfulness of it, but it's unavoidable with only two meetings after tonight left for the rest of the year. But, if there was any more discussion on reparations, did want to know, we have created the fund, the fund is available for donations, and we haven't received any yet, but we'll make that announcement and have that available for private entities, corporations, individuals, whoever would like to donate to it as well. But, just in preparing that resolution, I wasn't 100% on if donations into the fund would offset the city's commitment into that fund, or if it would be on top of the city's commitment. And if that commitment is $10 million, is that an agreed-upon amount by the full council.
Okay, all right. So, let's stick to that topic. Alderman Simmons and Alderman Rainey.
It was my intention that $10 million be a commitment from the city of Evanston, and that anything above that, which I'm hopeful for, and definitely will be pushing for, is additional funding to do more work in reparation.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
I have to agree with Alderman Simmons, who is the leader of this effort. However, I think we're a little far from having to have that ultimate discussion when we get to $999,000. And, you know, so I think we should definitely accept any contribution we get at this time, working towards the $10 million. But, you know, the city needs to continue its commitment to making this goal.
Okay.
And I can't imagine anybody in the city not agreeing with that. But, I think we have an obligation to reach out to the community, and to corporations, and to the university especially, and to the banks, the banks.
Alderman Simmons?
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, and really being mindful of a point you made early in this discussion about the banks and their role. But, certainly, I hope that we will lead by example, and $10 million, we know, is certainly not enough to bring the repair, but it is a statement. And I believe that it's one that should challenge other institutions in town, including universities and financial institutions.
And there may be even matching challenges.
Yes, absolutely. And even private family foundations. The reparation fund is available for donation. You can send a check to the city of Evanston, and in the memo, write Evanston Reparation, and all amounts are accepted, including $10 million.
And you will not be sent to the Ethics Committee for soliciting funds for the reparation fund, I promise.
One other thing to clarify, it is tax deductible?
Yes.
It is tax deductible. So, especially, we're in the end of the year, it's a giving season, you may have a few extra dollars left, go ahead and send to City of Evanston, and in the memo, Evanston Reparation. All donations are welcome. Thank you.
I thought I, I thought I read or heard this idea of creating a mechanism that made it easy for residents, if they wanted to make a voluntary donation to the reparations fund, sort of like on your IRS taxes, where you can say, yeah, I want to support, you know, public funding for campaigns. And I thought it was through the water bill, and it was basically, yeah, I want to give an extra $5, $10, $20, or whatever, this month to the reparations fund.
We can do that.
Back up. There was a discussion about that, we never took an action on it, but Hatesh, how difficult would it be for us to have an opt-in donation, either one time or reoccurring, so that residents that want to participate are able to easily?
We can do it, as the same time, as Mayor mentioned, I think we can make it something in the water bill, where we would have a box, and somebody can put in, yeah, extra five, 10 bucks, whatever, yeah, options are there.
Do we need to have a vote on that, or is that something you could do administratively?
We did this a couple of years ago, and I think we tried to lay out a schedule for the year of where those donations were going to go. I'll revisit that conversation that was had. I don't think we've done it in a while. I know that the water bills only come out once every two months. I'm not sure if we could make a deadline if we wanted to do this by the end of the year, but I'll talk with the Public Works Director and see if we can get this for one of the water bills in the near term.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Alderman Simmons. Okay. Okay, other discussions about the budget. Again, we're on item SP2, ordinance 149-0-19, that's for introduction tonight. Alderman Ravel.
Well, on a completely different subject, I know you all have received a couple of emails recently from some Central Street business owners about the impending increase in the parking rate from $1.50 an hour to $2.00 an hour, and talking about the impact of already the increase we had this year to $1.50 an hour, and the, and what, and the kind of feedback they've been getting from, from their customers. And so, just, so I will make a motion, but I'll, shall I make, I guess I'll make the motion first. I'm going to move that we keep the parking rate on the Central Street, in the Central Street Business District, at $1.50 an hour for this coming year.
Is there a second?
Second.
And so, and I discussed this briefly, I think, at the last meeting, really because of the location just a few blocks from our boundary with Wilmette. The Central Street Business District has different challenges and opportunities compared to our other business districts. The customer base for Central Street shops draws heavily from Wilmette and other suburbs to the north, where on-street parking is both abundant and free. And since we raised the parking rate earlier this year, the Central Street business owners have been hearing from their customers very definitely that they, some of them are really planning to take their shopping to Wilmette, where parking is not an issue. Not only because it's free, but also where they don't have to worry about expensive parking tickets, because we've seen an increase in our enforcement this year as well. Raising the parking rate to $2.00 an hour, I think, would turn more Central Street customers into former Central Street customers. But, on the other hand, maintaining the $1.50 an hour rate would help our businesses remain competitive with businesses in the northern suburbs, and it would help them remain vibrant contributors to our sales tax base.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Wilson?
Well, you know, unfortunately, I guess, I hear the exact same thing from the business districts in my word, and from the businesses there, pretty much word for word. So, I can't support this. I don't want to raise the rates, but we have to balance the budget. And I think all of our business districts are unique, all of our business districts are fantastic, and they all have their own challenges, but I don't think it's fair to, you know, take one particular district out. you know, take one particular district out and leave the burden to the rest of the districts. So I feel very strongly that we should keep this equitably, maybe not equitably, but at least in this situation, it's equally applied, and I think that that's the only fair way to do it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I agree. I mean, I don't have a business district, but I don't know at all how I could explain this to other business owners, that, you know, their rate is going to be $2. And I sit on parking and transportation, and I know, you know, last year, two years ago, we had this discussion, you know, the prices, we agreed to go up. I do regret that we had to do that. I do regret that I, you know, had to support that, because it has been a lot for people. It's the main thing people complain about, is the parking. Not only the parking, but then we also hired, I believe, one or two extra parking enforcement. So people just feel like we are ticketing, you know, a lot, which we are. My question for the city manager, and I tried to look in the budget, I couldn't find it again. What is the increase we're projecting with the going to $2 from $1.50?
1.3.
1.5 to 1.9 million.
1, okay, that's big. So I don't have a replacement for that. But my, I was looking at the budget, trying to figure out. But my question is too, we talked a lot about the technology, where you'll be able to park someplace, and then that money stay with your car. When is that going to be rolling out citywide?
Yeah, so what you're referring to is the pay ones park anywhere, that's where you can, you know, load up your Park Evanston app with, you know, an hour or two hours, and then go anywhere within the city and park, and move around, and allow that to be utilized anywhere. So that, I think, will be a tremendous help to a lot of people who feel like if you pay, and then you move, then you have to pay again, and you lose sort of that leftovers that you would have had otherwise. That works really well if the rates are uniform across the city. It doesn't work so well if the rates are different in different areas, because if you went, if you paid a lower rate and moved to a higher rate, it wouldn't work. So that's, you know, Chicago is using that model right now, and it works with some level of success, but not as much as we could have, once we implemented if it was uniform across the city, excluding commuter rate lots. So that I have heard is potentially by the end of the year.
By the end of this year?
Correct.
Okay, so then my, I mean, we, right, we have to balance the budget. I'm very hesitant, you know, $2 million in parking fees is a ton of money. I don't know how to replace that at this point, but I know that, you know, it's, even just knowing that, people feel like we're just ticketing like crazy to balance our budget. So I am going to be making a commitment to look through the budget this year, and just really figuring out how, what we can do to be creative for that. I can't remember if we talked about raising it again, I think we did not, but, I mean, I would love for us to get back to the $1.50, because we all feel it. I mean, I know we all pay to park as well, but, you know, when you have someone who's running in somewhere for 20 minutes, and they're paying on the app, and, you know, whatever, and it just all adds up, and it starts to feel like a real burden to our community.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is the kind of nickel and diming that I was talking about when we were talking about selling the library parking lot and rezoning some downtown properties, so that we could redevelop them as commercial. So I just would encourage everyone, and I reminded you all that I would bring this up during budget season if we got to this point, but we shouldn't be doing this. We need to think, we need to think more holistically, we need to think bigger picture about where we're going. We're doing a two-year budget now, and we need to be creative. So looking at revenues, I know everyone is wringing their hands about revenues, but we've had big opportunities this year to do something that would prevent having this increase. So I'm a little bit miffed at this, but I understand where we're at, and it's right where I thought that we would be. So please, going forward, let's try to look at things from a larger picture, rather than these little nickel and diming things.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. All right, seeing no more lights, we had a motion to keep the Central Street Business Area at 150 for 2020. That motion was seconded. All in favor of that motion? All opposed?
No.
All right. Do I have to do, do I have to do a roll on that?
No.
I think that was seven, it was two, four, seven against. Is that correct? Okay. All right, so that motion doesn't pass. Alderman Rainey?
I want to move an item that we've placed on the table without any restrictions prior to the time we placed an item on the table requiring a date certain. Is this an appropriate time? I'm not sure if I can do it now. Is the floor open for?
Is it related to the budget?
We still have.
Related to the budget. I want to, it's a budget item. I mean, it could be a budget item.
If it's an amendment to the budget, then yes, it's appropriate.
Hmm.
Go ahead, Alderman Rainey.
Has potential.
Go ahead.
I would like to move the Class R1 liquor license from the table. It was tabled, I don't know, July, let's see, when, when was it tabled here? It was, it was on the June 10th agenda, and then the following meeting in July, it was tabled just forever, I guess. And so I'd like to remove it from the table. So I move the Class R1 Liquor License Ordinance. It is not issuing a license, but it's creating a license, which would allow for liquor to be sold at Welsh Ryan Arena.
Okay.
Which, in the final analysis, is a revenue.
Right. So I think, Alderman Rainey, what we have to do on that, because it's a completely separate motion, and we are on the motion of, for introduction, the budget. During call, all the wards.
What should you decide the floor after?
Can we take? Well, how do we say again?
She can take it from the table, but it needs to be noticed for the next meeting to discuss it.
Yeah, I did want to discuss it.
Okay, got it. All right. So is there a second?
We need to take a vote.
We have to take a vote?
I'm sorry.
It just says a motion must be made, so it needs at least a second.
Corporation Council, apologies. Since we do have the budget motion on the floor, wouldn't this motion be out of order right now? She can't do it after the budget, after we, when she gets the floor and we don't have a motion on the floor.
I think, I think that's correct.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, so we'll take your, we're going to hold your motion for now, we'll take it once we get this passed for introduction. All right, anything else on the budget?
I just wanted to add one more thing about the budget that I, we didn't talk about in the presentation, which was, maybe you could bring up the budget balancing worksheet, Kimberly? We did add the projection, a very conservative projection, of the additional tax that would be generated by the events at Northwestern, now that that was approved last week. So that is how we made up some of the loss of revenue due to the cannabis tax and the self-storage tax being removed. So we've got $200,000 in there for that. We also, in the past, have talked about whether or not to extend that amusement tax that we currently have to nonprofits. So I've talked with our Corporation Council about whether or not Northwestern would be exempted from paying that amusement tax on concerts. And it sounds like it's based on who the provider of the concert is, whether they use an entertainment company to hold the concert, or they, you know, essentially hold it themselves. So it serves as an item to be discussed this evening, if there is an interest on the Council in applying that amusement tax to certain venues over a certain number of seats, or nonprofit venues. We've talked about doing Northlight Theater, things like that in the future. So just wondering if there's any discussion about that.
Yeah, I would look.
Okay, well, let's, that's not about that, so let's talk, we'll stay on this topic. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, and I was thinking along the lines of for not-for-profits, if they did, if they were itinerant, they did not have a regular stationary theater of 65 seats or less, then they would not be taxed under any circumstances. If they had more than 65 seats, then I think they should be taxed. That was my cutoff.
Okay.
And Northwestern, I mean, yes, they have huge, wonderful, not inexpensive events that should be taxed.
Okay, Alderman Wilson?
So I do think that's an interesting question, but I also feel like it's probably a longer conversation that we would want to have as a, you know, maybe a separate ordinance and not rolled into this budget cycle. You know, for example, what about the high school? Like, I'm not, I don't want to charge the, you know, kids a tax for YAMO or something like that. So I think that's just a longer conversation. I'd prefer to, okay, I just, I would prefer not to try to fit that into this very limited conversation, so. Yeah, so, yeah, let's, let's.
Vote against tabling.
Yeah, so.
Easy refer it, if you wanted.
Yeah, just like, maybe just have a refer for further discussion, and, I'm not suggesting we table, I think we should just, you know, bring it up as a new ordinance or an amended ordinance.
Okay.
All right, so City Manager's Office will look into that, and at a subsequent meeting, we'll talk about that. All right, different topic, I think. Alderman Simmons?
On the vacant property tax, did we ever have a final feedback or any? I see that it didn't make the budget, so was there any final feedback that you could share from that?
Sure. Good evening, Johanna Leonard, Community Development Director. We are studying a little bit more what the revenues would be, based on reducing the registration fee, but adding the additional fees for violations, and that I think Alderman Wilson suggested that we look at, instead of the front end, but spread it out as the properties create more challenge in the built environment. So that's, we're doing a little bit more review of the numbers and the types, going through each property that is vacant, and the types of violations that they have each accrued, so we can get a sense of what that would generate.
Would we forfeit it in the 2020 budget, or would it be actions that we could take throughout the year if we decide?
Correct. It could be actions that we could take after the budget.
All right, thank you.
These would be separate, as they're separate ordinance.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who's the mayor pro tem? Is it still Alderman Brithwaite?
No.
Alderman Ravel, so you're stepping in as mayor, and Alderman Rainey has her light on.
Alderman Rainey. I beg your pardon? I'm calling on you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I would like to have a list of all the vacant properties that are applicable here, and who owns them, and the addresses, and who owns them. Thank you.
Alderman, or mayor pro tem, if you want to.
Can I suggest you just take the mayor's seat, so you're able to see the lights and acknowledge the Alderman? Thank you.
Yeah, he's just taking a short break, so.
All right. I don't see any lights. Anybody have any more comments about any of that?
Someone can make a motion to call the question.
So, okay, so we are ready then to vote on the motion for introduction of ordinance 149-0-19, approval of the fiscal year 2020 budget, in the amount of $320,709,227. I think, do we not?
Yeah, it was moved by Alderman Simmons, and so.
Yeah, so we're ready, we're ready for a roll call.
Okay, Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Brithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. And Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, the motion passes, nine to zero. So now we're ready for Resolutions 110-R-19 through 115-R-19, the debt service property tax abatements, and, boy, this is abating the amount of $5,711,746 in property taxes for the year 2019, to pay principal and interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Do I have a motion?
Move or approve?
Second.
Thank, yes, thank you, Alderman Ravel, for stepping in for a minute. Is there, so this has been moved and seconded. This is an item that's for introduction. Again, this is the debt service property tax abatements. Because we have public, excuse me, this is for action, excuse me.
Sorry to interrupt. The agenda is wrong. It's 100R-19, not 110. If you could just reread that.
All right, so, just so everybody knows, it's SP3, this is Resolution 100, not 110, 100R-19 through 100-R- through 115, so that is correct, through 115R-19 for debt service property abatement. Is there anyone, before, we see if there's any conversation?
Mayor, sorry, could you make a change?
All right, I'm going to move it again, we'll start, okay, we're going to start over. SP3, Resolution 100-R-19 through 115-R-19, debt service property tax abatements. Staff is recommending review, recommends review and adoption of these resolutions, abating in the amount $5,711,746 property taxes levied for the year 2019, to pay principal and interest on the general obligation corporate bonds. And these resolutions can be introduced in one motion, as stated above, and approved through a single roll call vote. Is, will someone move this?
Move adoption. Second.
For a second, okay. Is there any public comment on these items? Seeing none, any discussion? Seeing none, city clerk, could you please take the roll?
We don't have to, but, Alderman, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, these resolutions pass the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to move to SP4. This is ordinance, excuse me, I'm going to go around and just ask people to introduce. So Alderman Fisk, would you introduce that one? Then I'm going to come around the other way as we go all the way around.
Sure, SP4 is ordinance 99019, adding Section 20 to establish the adult-use cannabis retailers' occupation tax. Staff recommends adoption by adding a new Section 20, adult-use cannabis retailers' occupation tax. It's for introduction.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, city clerk, could you take the roll on SP4, ordinance 99-0-19?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
All right, ordinance 99-0-19 passes for introduction, the Evanston City Council on nine to zero vote. Alderman Brithwaite, could you take us to SP5?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item SP5 ordinance 136-0-19, the 2019 City of Evanston tax levy. Staff recommends the City Council adoption of the tax levy ordinance 136-0-19, which levels the annual property tax for the General Operations Human Services Fund, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Police and Fire Pension Funds, the Solid Waste Fund totaling $34,851.18, extending, including the 3% loss factor. This represents an increase of 10.8% over the 2018 levy of $31,458,362 as extended. This is for introduction.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, city clerk, could you take the roll on ordinance 136-0-19?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
And Alderman Ravel?
Thank you. Ordinance 136-0-19, SP5 passes for introduction, nine to zero. Alderman Wynn, could you take us to SP6?
Yes, SP6, ordinance 137-0-19, General Assistance 2019 Tax Levy. Staff recommends City Council adoption of tax levy ordinance 137-0-19, which levies the annual property tax for general assistance in the amount of $1,113,402 as extended, including 3% loss factor. This represents an increase of 21.2% over the 2018 levy of $918,367 as extended. I move introduction.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Since you are having your public comments to accommodate the interviews they found to speak about Kevin Brown, I have an issue with SP6, and I need to speak to y'all before SP6, it says, Ordinance 137-0-19, The General Assistance 2019 Tax Levy. This general assistance, is this supposed to be the general assistance that take care of the homeless and people that need to be taken care of? If this is what it's supposed to be, then this tax cannot be levied, because remember when you voted back in 2019, in 2016, to dissolve.
Twenty twelve.
The township. You was not given the authority to levy any taxes for General Assistance Fund. That was in the bill that was passed back then. You need to look at it. I asked, had questioned that before, and it is still being done. So all of the taxes that was collected for the General Assistance Program under a levy need to be paid back to the taxpayer, since you did not have the authority to levy that tax. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Esther. Okay, any other public comment on that item? All right, so, this was moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll on Ordinance 137-0-19, General Assistance 2019 Tax Levy? Alderman Wynn, Wynn move that.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns? Alderman Sufferton? And Alderman Ravel?
All right, SP6, Ordinance 137-0-19 passes for introduction, the Evanston City Council, on nine to zero vote. Alderman Wilson, could you introduce SP7?
Yes, with regard to SP7, Ordinance 138-0-19, The 2019 Evanston Library Fund Tax Levy. The Library Board is recommending the City Council adoption of Tax Levy Ordinance 138019 per the Library Board Action, which was on October 27, 2019, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Public Library in the amount of $7,476,289 as extended, including the 3% loss factor. This represents an increase of 8.5% over the 2018 levy of $6,887,755 as extended. This is for introduction. I move introduction.
Second.
All right, this is open for discussion. Alderman Rainey?
I'm explaining that I, while I don't usually vote against introductions, I am voting against this because of the 8.5% increase. I think that's unconscionable as we're all struggling to keep things to a minimum.
Okay, thank, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, and I've spoken to Director Dan Zick Lyons, so I'm also voting no, but my reason necessarily isn't the increase. My reasoning is, I asked a couple of years ago, I think, when we talked about Crown and them opening the new branch on Main Street, what the fate of the Chicago Avenue Main Street branch was, and I think at that time, we talked about, you know, they talked about probably closing it. Well, it's going to remain open for another year. I've read the notes from their meeting, and I understand, I mean, I understand their rationale. I don't agree. I think it's to have two libraries on Main Street, I think, is more than we need. I also think that we could have, they could have thought about closing that branch and moving those resources to Robert Crown, considering the cost of Robert Crown, and that that library is obviously gonna be much bigger and serve a much greater population of people, so that's why I will not be supporting this.
That's why there's an 8.5% increase. So we're on the same page.
Thank, thank, thank you, Alderman. Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on SP7, Ordinance 138-0-19, 2019 Evanston Library Fund Tax Levy?
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, SP7, Ordinance 138-0-19, 2019 Evanston Library Tax Fund, passes for introduction on a six to three vote of the Evanston City Council. Alderman Ruessmanns, could you take a step, could you introduce SP8?
Yes. Ordinance 139019, Special Service Area Number Four, 2019 Tax Levy. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Tax Levy Ordinance 139019, which levies the annual property tax for Special Service Area Number Four in the amount of $592,665. This represents an increase of 14.1% over the 2018 levy of $525,000. For introduction.
Thank, thank you. Any, any conversation? Okay, seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on SP8, Ordinance 139-0-19?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, SP8, Ordinance 139-0-19, passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Can I, let me ask this question. Can we take a almost consent agenda type on the others to see if anyone wants to move it off? I gotta take it each one. Take each one.
You can do consent agenda.
I, I'm sorry, what do you think, Alderman Fisk? We gotta do each one separately, okay. All right, so we're gonna go SP9. Alderman Sufferton, can you introduce that one?
SP9, I move, SP9, Ordinance 14019, Special Service Area Number Six, 2019 Tax Levy. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Tax Levy Ordinance 14019, which levies annual property tax for Special Service Area Number Six in the amount of $221,227,835 as extended, including a loss factor of 3%. This represents a 1% increase over the 2018 levy as extended of $225,420. For introduction.
Second.
Okay, any conversation? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the roll on SP9?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, SP9, Ordinance 140-0-19, passes for introduction, the Evanston City Council, on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Ravel, could you take us to SP10?
SP10, Ordinance 154-0-19, Amending Various Chapters of Title X, Motor Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Parking Violations. Staff recommends that we adopt this ordinance, amending various chapters of Title X regarding parking violations. The ordinance will realign parking fines in phases over the next two years with a maximum increase to a single violation being $10. The proposed realignment affects many of the lesser issued citations and is recommended to ensure consistency and uniformity among the various citation types. And this is for introduction.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion on SP10? Seeing no light, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on Ordinance 154-0-19?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, Ordinance 154-0-19, passes for introduction on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Rainey could introduce.
Ordinance, Ordinance 47019, O19, Administrative Tow Penalty. Staff is recommending that the council adopt Ordinance 147O19, an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter 6, to add an administrative penalty under certain circumstances involving a vehicle seizure and impoundment. This is for introduction. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, any, any conversation? Seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the roll on SP11?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
No.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel? We do not have the vote of Alderman Wynn.
Okay, so, SP11, Ordinance 147-0-19, passes for introduction on a seven to one vote with Alderman Wynn absent for this vote. Okay. Alderman Fleming, could you, could you introduce SP12?
SP12, Ordinance 150-0-19, Amending City Code Subsection 9-2-3 to Add Fire Department Emergency Incident Cost Recovery Fees. Staff recommend council adopt this ordinance, amending City Code Subsection 9-2-3 to Add Fire Department Emergency Incident Cost Recovery Fees. For introduction.
Second.
Okay, any, any comments or conversation on SP12? Seeing, seeing no light, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on SP12, Ordinance 150-0-19?
Alderman Fleming, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, SP12, Ordinance 150-0-19, passes for introduction on eight to zero vote with Alderman Wynn being absent for this vote. All right, Alderman Fisk, could you introduce SP13?
Yes, SP13 is Ordinance 151019, Amending the Amusement Tax from 4% to 5%. Staff recommends the council adoption of this ordinance, amending the tax to increase the rate assessed from 4% to 5% of the admission fee or charge effective on January 1, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the roll on SP13?
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Brithwaite? Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ruessmanns?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
All right, SP13, Ordinance 151-0-19, passes for introduction on an eight to one vote. All right, we're now gonna move into just any mayor announcements, communication from the clerk, and then public, and then public comment. I know we have a lot of folks here that are interested in public comment. City Clerk, is it possible, can you run out and get the list out there as well, just so we can know what the number is, so I can allot the time appropriately?
I don't believe there's a list. I would request that an Alderman make a motion to recess for five minutes, so we can get folks signed up for public comment. Typically, public comment is at the beginning, but because it's at the end, a lot of folks decided to show up around the time that public comment starts.
I move that we take a five-minute recess.
Second, all right, we are gonna recess for five minutes.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
When can I make my motion to remove?
Oh.
I, I would like to make my motion to remove the item from the table before we recess and go into public comment.
Okay.
Well, you can, there wasn't a vote on the motion to recess, so I guess someone can withdraw it. She can make her motion.
I'll withdraw my motion to recess for the moment.
Very good, okay. Alderman, Alderman Rainey, please make your motion on the table.
I would, I, I'll send this to, I guess, to staff to place on the next Administration Public Works Agenda. I move that we remove from the table the July 8 tabling of ordinance, let's see, Ordinance 70018, O19, having to do, no, no, it's not that. Ordinance 81019, having to do with the R1 liquor license. It's an ordinance.
Second.
51019. Okay, thank you.
And we have to take a vote to remove that?
Yes.
Okay, all, all, do I, can a voice vote do? All right, all in favor?
Quick question. Alderman Rainey, can you reduce that to writing for the clerk's office?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Now I move that we recess for five minutes.
All right, is there a second? All in favor? All right, we're recessed for five minutes. Everyone, please be back here by 8:15. Okay, I'm gonna call back to order, call back to order our meeting. Okay, all right. Do I need somebody to take us out of recess, back to this meeting?
I'd like to move that we can reconvene as a city council.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, excellent. The Monday, November 18, 2019, Evanston City Council has reconvened a couple, a couple items at the top, and then really, we're going into public, public comment. First up is any mayor announcements and, and proclamations. I just wanted to welcome back, whoops, she was here, but maybe she's left already, Genevieve Bookwalter.
She did leave.
Genevieve, Genevieve works with the Chicago Tribune, has been with us for a long time, had a baby, and was on maternity leave, and this is her first city council meeting back here. So I don't know if she's still here or she left, so welcome, welcome back, Genevieve. Again, I, I thank everybody that sits up at the press box up front for the important service you provide to all of us here in the community. Second is, I issued a proclamation, I'm not gonna read the whole proclamation, but I just wanted to acknowledge, because we have an organization here in town called Rainbows for All Children, and Rainbows for All Children support children who are grieving. They've lost a parent or a sibling. It's, it's really tough, right, and there's probably people in this room who have lost siblings or a parent. And they are here in Evanston, they've been here for a long time, and they do great work. And so I issued a proclamation for Children's Grief Awareness Day on November 21 here. So I just wanted to make note of that. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
I just want to acknowledge the receipt of several communications addressed to the council and the city manager opposing the termination of Kevin Brown, and those communications will be included in the minutes for this meeting.
Okay, thank, thank you, Clerk Reed. We're now gonna move into public comment. For those of you that, you know, aren't regulars here at the city council meeting, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment. And so what we do per our rules is, we take the total number of people that have signed up for public comment, we divide it by 45 minutes, and that's the, and that's the amount of time. Today, we have basically 41 people that have signed up for public comments, so. I, before in the past, said, well, let's just go with a minute apiece, and then somebody said, well, mayor, that's not truly the calculation, if you do the math. So what we're gonna, what we're gonna do tonight is, we're gonna set it at a minute ten, okay, for, for each person. Obviously, there's lots of people that wanna get up here and share their concerns or share their perspectives. So I'm gonna ask Clerk Reed to keep track of the time. When your time is up, I am gonna say thank you in your first name, okay? And, and we just need to, to get through, because we wanna be respectful of everybody that wants to get up here and, and speak.
Mr. Mayor, as a note, we do have former mayor Tisdale here, and according to our council rules, a former mayor or Alderman is allowed the floor. So if we can allow Mayor Tisdale to have the floor first and not count that toward public comment.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Clerk, Clerk Reed, okay.
I also, one last thing, would potentially suggest to an Alderman, if anyone wants to make a motion to extend public comment, to suspend the rules and extend public comment, so folks can have at least a minute and 30 seconds to speak, I think the public would appreciate that motion.
All right. Okay, is there anybody that would like to move that motion on the council? Okay, so we're gonna stick with a minute ten, everybody. We're sticking to, we're sticking to the rules that we always do. And, and so I'm gonna ask that folks come up here. I've got a list, and I like that rule. I had no idea we had a rule that any former mayor or council member can come first, so I like that. Before we do that, I just wanted, I just wanted to, to say before we call everybody up, you know, as your mayor, I would like to say that I know there are many caring residents who are here this evening to voice their concern of our recent management decision made last week, as well as to express their support for the outstanding work of our Youth and Young Adult Division. Due to the fact that the matter many will speak on is a personnel matter governed by personnel policies and applicable laws, neither the city council nor city manager is able to discuss the matter or release any information. What we will do this evening, as we try to do every Monday night, is listen intently to the concerns and the issues you voice. So with that, former mayor Tisdale, would you like to come up? And you have a minute ten, Liz.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Do I have a minute ten or longer?
According to the rules, you have longer.
Go Clerk Reed. Thank you all for being better souls than I am and continuing to do this work. It might help if I tell, tell a story. When I started as mayor, I was asked to go to way too many funerals of young men who had been shot by other young men. At one of them, I made my normal pitch of, please don't retaliate. And I looked at the faces of the congregation, and the stony faces of the young men were, made it clear that they were going to retaliate. I had not walked in their shoes. I am white and a grandmother. They discounted everything that I had to say. You should listen to this, Steve. A mother called. You should listen to this, Steve. A mother called me. This is all in the pre-Kevin Brown Youth, Young, Young Adult Division. A mother called me, a bullet had gone through her apartment and hit the crib where her daughter lay. She wanted me to go to her street that night and drive on it, because she said she was afraid. I did, until the police kicked me out, and I drove them a little crazy driving around and around, but I did it. After Kevin came, I went with him on Saturday nights in the summer, several Saturday nights, to talk to the people who were out on the street, young men who did not come to city council meetings. I said to Kevin, they're not going to talk to me. I've been this route. Kevin said, no, come, so I went with him and with a couple outreach workers. And I went up to the young people who were on the streets, and I said, I'm your mayor, and you don't come to council meetings, so I'm coming after you to find out what you want, and they all wanted jobs. So Kevin and the youth and young adult group did a tremendous job getting jobs. The reason that those kids would talk to me, I was still a white grandmother, but I had Kevin, and they trusted him, and they figured if he was with me, he vouched for me, I must be okay. So it seems to me to be terribly sad to be here tonight discussing Kevin, when we should be celebrating the work of the youth and young adult program. The young people who wanted jobs have much better options now, thanks to Kevin and thanks to everyone else who worked on the Oakton, Oakton Community College election. We now have five out of seven seats are Evanston residents, and Evanston will no longer be underserved by Oakton Community College. They are committed to coming to Evanston and having a building here so our kids can access it easily. But we need Kevin, and we need the youth and young adult program to bring our young people to Oakton and help them all the way through Oakton, which they are ready to do. We should be celebrating youth and young adults, and I know that Kevin did not do all of this on his own. Many of you were on the council when I was and helped him, and he stands on the shoulders of the police force, the not-for-profits in town, many, many people. But Kevin has done a remarkable job, and one of the best things I did as mayor, I believe, was to encourage Kevin and to support Kevin, and I am here to ask you to do the same.
Thank, thank, thank you, Liz. Next up is Mike Vasilko. Mike, I'm sorry, you and I think everybody else, unless we get a former mayor in the, in the crowd, you got a minute 10.
Time is short. I wrote a, an email to everyone on the council, cut to the chase. I asked that the council eliminate advertisement from Evanston Now. I asked that the council censure Evanston Now to the extent they can. Evanston Now published the addresses of three citizens after the town prince town hall. There was no reason to separate three individuals who spoke and issue their home addresses, which many found threatening and intimidating, and there's just no reason for it in journalism. In the case of Evanston Now, the lack thereof. So I'd like the, the council to take some action on that tonight. I'd also like to know what the status, finally, of the interviewing process is for the city manager search firms. City manager, city manager deflected that earlier today. I'd also like to know what my request is, the status of the request to name Bennett Johnson, a community member of the interview team. Regarding the budget.
Thank you, Mike.
I'd like the city to finally demand from the Friends of Robert Crown that they pay the $12.5 million remaining from their $17.5 million that they advertised to pay for construction of the ICE Palace on Main Street. Lastly, since I don't have time to do everything else, this is the propaganda sheet that's in the budget about the residents being at the top of the list. We all know that the residents end up down here, which is apropos for putting citizen comments at the end of the council meeting tonight. So that's one thing we'd like to have changed. The other thing we'd like to have changed is, what's not accurate is Northwestern is at the top of the list. So really, the organizational chart is Northwestern, then the city council, and the residents are at the bottom. I'd like this entered into the minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Oliver, come on, come on up. Then we've got, then we've got Portia Davis, then Gail Schechter. Welcome. Minute 10, Oliver.
Good evening, Mayor Haggerty, all city council members and administrative staff. I am duly pained, appalled, and disturbed by this despicable and deplorable action that has been rendered thus far regarding Mr. Kevin Brown. Based upon what has been reported, the actions being parceled out for mere indiscretions and carelessness don't fit the infraction. If parking tickets were paid with a city credit card, why wouldn't there be approval from the account by the administrative superiors? Who signed for those payments? Shouldn't that or those persons be responsible or accountable for their complicity in those transactions? Were there meetings conducted to rectify the situation? Was a bill of particulars issued with a time compliance? By now, what now, and for what reason is this occurring to Mr. Kevin Brown? Who is on a dais who hasn't had multiple indiscretions or questionable behaviors where no action has been administered? I would cringe to believe that such reputable city officials would allow this type of decision to go on. Is it retaliatory for his leadership successes or for expressing his thoughts using an equity lens? I trust that you will reevaluate your position and act with reasonable thinking skills and conscientious actions. I recommend that those of you involved in the Kevin Brown debacle go and refill your integrity cavity.
Thank, thank, thank you, Oliver. Next up, Portia Davis, then Gail Schechter, then Harris Miller.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Portia Davis, and I was the program coordinator for the youth and young adults division in the Parks and Recreation Department for a little over six years, until my abrupt and rather quiet departure this February of this year. But I'll talk a little bit about that, but right now, I'm here to speak on the character integrity of Kevin Brown through personal experience, as having worked directly with him throughout my time. I'm here to reiterate with members of city council in the Evanston community, my disbelief and quite frankly outrage about the termination of one of your hardest working employees being Mr. Brown, due to what has been stated as gross incompetence, which is an all-time low even for the city of Evanston to consider him as. To be clear, the allegations are 100% false, as I was here when all of those instances that are being referenced to determine Kevin as being grossly incompetent, I was present for. And we were given directives and/or approved by senior leadership to handle those issued tickets with city credit card. What I see as grossly incompetent is the city being eagerly, I see the city eagerly ticketing city of Evanston employees working on the clock, performing city duties on city property in properly identified vehicles that includes an employee placard, and then expect already underpaid and overworked staff to pay for this out of their pocket. You know what this rings to me? A setup. The process for city credit cards bill payments goes from the manager, assistant director, to the director of the department for review and final approval. How is it that over a span of three years, Kevin or myself were never disciplined for these given infractions, yet was given the final approval by senior leadership, and now this has escalated to an immediate termination? That is not due process and was very intentional. Mr. Hemingway has sat in my office for extended periods of time discussing his intention to get rid of Kevin Brown. This rhetoric continued. However, it took a different form as my name turned to Pocahontas in Little Bit. In discussions of which you looked good over the weekend in a bikini with your insult turtleneck polish.
Thank you.
Was publicly and confidently directed at me in front of current employees and was reported. You all did nothing to protect staff from being openly targeted, harassed, and for me sexually. I'm again asking city council that an independent investigation be conducted on the current director of the Parks and Recreation Department for harassment. That human resources actively participated in this cover-up.
Thank you.
And the intentional targeting of the division and the employment of Kevin Brown be reconsidered and overturned, because this is not right.
Gail, is Gail Schechter here? Is Gail here? Nope. Harris Miller, Michelle Hayes, Liz Ruberio.
Gail's here.
There's Gail, okay, come on up, Gail. And then if folks can just, again, so we can be respectful and try to get through everybody's comments, in a minute 10, I'll remind everyone. Gail, you, and then we got Harris, and then Michelle Hayes, welcome.
You already got my communications in support of Kevin Brown. I am here representing the Addy Wyatt Center. I'm going to read from a letter from Dr. Bernard Lafayette, an internationally recognized civil rights leader who served on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s staff in the 60s. He currently leads the Kingian Nonviolence Conflict Reconciliation Training efforts across the U.S. and around the world. He serves as a distinguished scholar at Auburn in Alabama and is the chair of the Board of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference founded by Dr. King. So this is his letter on, on SCLC letterhead to the members of the city council. I'm writing to you today in support of Mr. Kevin Brown, who has been leading the youth and young adult division for the city of Evanston. I am familiar with Mr. Brown's work through my colleagues in Kingian Nonviolence Conflict Reconciliation, I'm going to skip because I know I only have a minute. Mr. Brown is an inspired leader whose innovations in working with youth have brought monumental improvements to the lives of Evanston's youth and to the city of Evanston. I will just end with his last sentence. I urge you to make whatever changes are necessary to keep him in his position in the city, so he's able to continue this very important work in your community. Dr. Bernard Lafayette, chairman of the board.
Thank you.
If you want to, as a note, if you want to tender your written statements, they'll be included in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. All right, Harris Miller, then Michelle Hayes, then Liz Ruberio, then Doreen Price. Welcome, Harris.
All right. Good evening, Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. I understand Kevin Brown was fired over city parking tickets on Friday, November 15th. According to a Dear Evanston interview, he stayed the Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Hemingway, and Assistant Ms. Hawk told him it was okay to use a city credit card to pay for the nine city vehicle tickets, and it was approved. Yet, the city decided to either have Kevin admit to so-called wrongdoing, that he did not commit or face termination despite giving the okay by his supervisors. Perhaps this is a part of a secret plan to cut off services and department funds from poor and at-risk youth and young adults. The residents are confident that he does an excellent job, as you could tell tonight by the crowd. Please reinstate Keith Brown, or Kevin Brown into his position. If this is truly wrongdoing, then please terminate Mr. Hemingway and Ms. Hawk for giving him the authorization in the first place. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Harris. Liz Ruberio, excuse me, Michelle, Michelle Hayes, Liz Ruberio, and then Doreen Price.
Hi, my name is Michelle Hayes. I live in Brumel Park. City council, mayor, Clerk Reed. I have been here before to support Kevin Brown and his work, and am frustrated to have to be here again. I, under Mr. Brown, violence in Evanston has been reduced measurably. I think he is the one person who knows more about youth in Evanston than anyone else in the city, and in point of fact, I reached out to Mr. Brown when I started my campaign for Oakton Community College, and he blew me away with how much he knew about youth in Evanston and about how to get kids to attend community college. It is outrageous that this has happened, and while I know that city council is not part of the city of Evanston's Human Services Department, I also want to remind you all that you represent us, and we are here telling you what we want to see. So please reinstate Kevin Brown and fix this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Liz, come on up, and then Doreen Price, then Madeline Decree, and then Brenda Greer, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Liz Rubero, and I'm a lifelong Evanstonian, part of a multi-generational Evanston family. I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, and what we've witnessed in the termination of Kevin Brown is definitely part of the ugly. I've reached out to each of you on Friday when I learned about the pending termination of Kevin, and I'd like to thank Alderman Sufferton for being the only one to reply to my email. There are many problems with what has occurred here, but given the limited time, I'll only address a few. Earlier this evening, the council participated in a training entitled "Racial Equity in Evanston: Building a Sustainable Action Plan." In that training, we heard a definition of racial equity to include working to address root inequities through elimination of policies, practices, attitudes, and cultural messages that reinforce differential outcomes by race and ethnicity or fail to eliminate them. The policy that led to the firing of Kevin Brown is rooted in racial inequity. Let me pose a question. Would you ticket a police vehicle, ambulance, or fire truck while responding to a call? I hope the answer is no, because that would cause harm. Why on earth would the city ticket vehicles being driven by outreach workers? This policy causes harm. They are doing critical work with the most vulnerable citizens in our community. These youth and young adult are predominantly black and brown people. The work of the outreach team is complicated and diverse. And I'm going to skip ahead, I know I'm out of time here, but you have the opportunity to undo the harm by conducting an independent investigation into this personnel matter. If you are concerned about the money, because the city is struggling, I have my checkbook here tonight, and I will pay for the tickets and fees incurred by the outreach team personally. The city of Evanston should do the same. Put your money, your policy, your behavior, and your attitude where your mouth is by reinstating Kevin Brown to his job so he can continue the work of racial equity. Thank you.
Next up, Doreen. Come on up, Doreen, a minute 10, and then we've got Madeline Decree, then Brenda Greer, and then Harold Daniels.
After the last city council meeting, I said that we all needed to speak about equity and justice and also about our legal department in various shapes and forms, and it's coming back to haunt my words, but not necessarily avoiding haunting the council. This, we should know better, and we can do better, and to have what I'm doing, going through right now is so tiny compared to what these people are describing. I've been victimized in terms of people saying false things and lying, and it's horrible. And I lost my job doing the best job ever, for real, not someone having to tell me that was the best job ever. My team told me, my working team, not any political team. So I know what it's like to do a good job, and if somebody does that to someone like that, that is shame on you. The other thing is, is this, I'm going to read this really quick. It has to do with, the library has always been a source close to my heart. As a young girl, growing up on the South Side of Chicago, becoming a scientist eventually. I wrote this note to Karen. Unbeknownst, I'd be relegated to City Hall for yet a myriad of reasons, okay? And I go, hi Karen, great conversation Saturday at the, at the book thing for traveling with service dogs, service animals by air, road, rail, and ship across North America by Henry Kissir, who's an Evanston author, who's hard of hearing, who is impressive, and I hope the council invites him if he needs any more discussion about this.
Thank you.
Or just want to know. Let me finish, Mayor.
Thank you.
No.
You got.
EPL, no.
We're never going to get out of here.
No, Mayor. EPL stated policy, then arrest me, okay? EPL stated policy is very clear. What's inexperienced and brilliantly discussed by authors Henry Kissir and Christine Goodyear is confusion about what is unnecessary, what is unnecessarily disabling. Anything you do that right now that people are objecting to, the legal. Anything you do that right now that people are objecting to, the legal department is intricately involved if you're deliberately or even indeliberately being misadvised to disable anybody from doing their job or doing what's right. So the possible next steps. Thank you, Mayor, for this.
Doreen, I need, we need to get to the next speaker.
Okay, I know you do. Let me finish, please. Immediately, what we need to do is I put down several different things. The city says, well, then come up with things. I did, and it had to do about ordinance changes or clarifications. These we can do now, not the last three weeks of having speak to the hand kinds of behavior from our legal department, and then I can vouch for it and let people know I went through that. In the near future about Parks and Recreation, there's other things also listed. There are actionable items. And last but not least, the animal shelter adoption, and it's so exciting, I wrote to Karen, it's so exciting. Where are you?
Thank you, Doreen. All right, Madeline, is Madeline here? Madeline Decree, Brenda Greer? Come on up, Brenda. Harold Daniels, then Mary Rosinski, then Ray Freeman. If we can try to keep it to a minute 10 for our rules, that would be great, folks. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brenda Greer, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Brown. This evening, I'm asking the city council members and all those pertaining to this matter of $800 or $500 in ticket fines to settle this matter and reinstate Mr. Brown. The city of Evanston should be more concerned with the companies that are rewarded with grants to do business, to come into Evanston and not stay or starting businesses after being granted these grants. I would think this would be an amount or amounts to be recouped, more so than this $800 or $500, and why is an Evanston employee parking on city property in a city vehicle being ticketed? This touched a chord with me due to a situation that involved me also regarding tickets when I was an employee at the Evanston Police Department and being asked to resign for no reason whatsoever on my behalf or on my part in the 80s. This needs to stop, and it's setting a terrible example for our youth. And how do you think that the youth that work with him feels in regards to this? Thank you.
Thank you. Harold Daniels, come on up, Mr. Daniels, then we got Mary Rosinski, then Ray Freeman, then Albert Gibbs.
Good evening. My name is Harold Daniels and I'm a lifelong Evanstonian. I was contacted over the weekend about the situation with Mr. Brown. Over the years, Mr. Brown has provided leadership to our youth here in Evanston through various programming. It is my opinion that the value of his leadership is invaluable and will continue to be. I ask the city council to consider rescinding your termination because it's completely frivolous. There are no bases upon any organization terminating someone based upon parking tickets, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Mary Rosinski, and then Ray Freeman, then Albert Gibbs, then Betty Esther.
Hi, thank you. A couple of things. One, I want to say I wish our city would get our rules together, get them clear so everyone can understand them. I think they should be on when we're done with the budget. Second of all, Kevin Brown is an amazing human being, and he's done so much for our city, and I realize that sometimes you make mistakes, but it is a big person who can own that up and say, okay, we made a mistake, and let's correct it. I am shocked in the light of the fiasco with Robert Crown and the lack of financial accountability of $50 million and a $30 million project, that Mr. Hemingway, who I have requested for weeks and weeks, accounting on the expenses and revenues which went into those projections and have never been returned a call, I can't get a call back on a $50 million project, and someone as great and as impactful as Mr. Brown is getting terminated over funds. It's really so upsetting. I can't even believe it. So I'm hoping we can take a step back, take a deep breath, and go, what is really good for this community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. I want to call out Harold and Mary. They both did a great job staying at 110. All right, you're up next, Ray. Show everybody how it's done. Then we got Albert Gibbs, Betty Esther, then Candace Austin.
Good evening. I'll try to keep it short. Good evening. I want to say I agree with everybody who spoke before me. You should reinstate Kevin Brown. But what I want to talk about is the last week's city council meeting. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Hagerty, for your graceful introduction to last week's public comment. The first three items, I agree with 100%. That words matter, the city council is making decisions that affect people's lives, and that we all should use our words wisely. Now, the next part, which I'm sure is true but very complicated, you state that council is making decisions that you believe are best for the city. It appears to many of us that you're making decisions, then getting input from residents after the fact. When you're spending our money, we would appreciate you asking us first, and also making a distinction between what you feel is best for the city and what we believe is best for the residents that live here and pay the taxes. And then, after your excellent introduction on words, people's lives affected, and making decisions, I listened to the very first speaker, Scott, I don't know the last name, but Scott, who was on the ZBA for 10 years, said you need to take into consideration how the quality of life will be affected and what impact there will be on the surrounding home values before you vote on the text amendment to change zoning for Northwestern Welsh Ryan Arena. So after it is pointed out to you that an impact study needs to be done to address quality of life and impact on property values, at that point, the subject should be closed. No more discussion is needed unless and until that impact study is done. As also pointed out by several Aldermen.
Need to wrap that up, Ray.
Okay, three more sentences, please. And why aren't we following our own rules? If we are not going to follow our own rules, laws, and ordinances, then we do not need 38 or 40 boards, commissions, and committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Mr. Gibbs, Albert Gibbs, Betty Esther, then Candace Austin, and then Ally Harned.
Good evening, Albert Gibbs, Fifth Ward. I'd like to address the new budget proposal. I know this is a very complicated process with a lot of moving parts and pieces that you need to consider when trying to figure out what money goes where. Last year, we did a priority-based budget, which did not work. This year, we developed Evanston City Goals. At the beginning of the year, we spoke about six goals. The number one goal was to stabilize city finances. What have we done to achieve this goal? The only thing that we can see is to raise taxes and fees. Why is this? And then you fire Kevin Brown. I have not heard any discussion on cutting expenses. Why is this? Before our city manager left Evanston just a couple of months ago, we had a deficit of 3.5 million. Now we are hiring 14 new employees, spending a ton of money on studies, rebuilding, remodeling, new vehicles, Robert Crown. And where are we getting all this extra funding from? And then you fire Kevin Brown. How did we make up this 3.5 million deficit? Do we really need to borrow money from bonds every year? We already owe close to 200 million in bonds. With death service next year at about 12 million, and 2021, death service around 15 million. And then you fire Kevin Brown. I believe Evanston has some of the highest taxes and the most expensive recreational center in the nation. It looks like you are taxing and spending Evanston off the map. Please reevaluate your budget to make it a balanced budget with no increase in taxes and fees. Let's pay down some of our debt and add money to our pension funds. Let's take a look at your number one goal on stabilizing long-term city financing. And please keep in mind, what happened in 2008 will go broke just like that.
Thank you, Albert.
And then you fire Kevin Brown.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you very much, and I'd just like to close with this. It's no shame in getting egg on your face. You've done something kind of outrageous here by allowing this to happen. Be mature enough to respect what your position is to the community. Rehire Kevin Brown. I'll leave with this. I have filed a formal charge against an Alderman on this daze. I have been told recently that the conversation says I accuse this man of being racist. I said nothing of the sort. I said that man couldn't speak for me about my white friends that have stood next to me when I was trying to be murdered.
Albert.
So let's get it straight. Let's get it straight. I said he couldn't talk for me, and he couldn't offend my white friends. All of them should not be hurt by what that man had to say. Rehire Kevin Brown.
Thank you. Ms. Esther, come on up, then Candace Austin, Ally Harned, then Jean Marie Fries. Welcome.
Good evening. Hearing the news about Kevin Brown being let go, the one thing that I saw when I walked into Family Focus is what is going to happen to this program. Kevin Brown and his staff started what is called a Safe Space Peace Initiative, and what that was, talking to the young people there, it says, "From Dodge to Green Bay, from Emerson to Simpson, there is not to be any fighting of violence or things going on." There has been 40 days plus that the kids have not been fighting and stuff. So what is going to happen to this program? Kevin is gone. How are we going to keep it together? We give him our support and we give the program their support, but we are not the leaders. What is going to happen to this program? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Candace, come on up, and then Ally Harned, then Jean Marie Fries, then Dale Griffin. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Just for the sake of time, I'm not going to reiterate everything that's been said, but I am going to ask the same question that I asked the last time I was up here, when we were talking about reducing the budget and how could we do it, and maybe we would get rid of the Youth and Young Adult Program. What's really going on? I asked that same question tonight. Why does it seem like that there's an intentionality to break down a program that's effective, that's helping the underserved community with our youth? What's really going on? Do you all see a pattern, or is it just me?
Thank you. Ally, come on up. Ally Harned, Jean Marie, then Dale Griffin, then Engalia, Bianca.
Good evening, honorable everybody. I'm Ally Harned from the Second Ward. I'm here to speak in support of Kevin Brown's reinstatement as an employee of this blessed city of Evanston and to request the immediate opening of an independent investigation into the matter. First, a report from the parking lot. I parked my car at 6:13 PM. As of 9:06 PM, I still, my reconnaissance reports that I still do not have a ticket. I've been here definitely in that two-hour lot for way more than two hours at these super fun city council meetings, and I've never gotten a ticket. So, quick check, I'm white, just in case you didn't know. So I'm being funny, but this is really no laughing matter. Like, there are lives on the line, and I work as a school social worker in the community, as I've said before. I see families on the precipice of having to leave Evanston because they can't economically stay. I see youth sitting at the intersection of life and death, and you should be throwing resources at these people, not taking them away. An excerpt from an email that I sent to the mayor this evening. "It's hard to see this as anything other than a move to silence yet another Black and Indigenous person of color individual who is speaking truth to power. This is actually what systemic racism does. It gets in our brains and convinces us that decisions we make as people in the dominant group are for the good of the whole or difficult but necessary decisions. The work of dismantling systemic racism and systems of oppression is never-ending, and it is our job as white people to put in the layer. And as for the equity lens in the city of Evanston, I think it's broken."
Thank you. Jean Marie, then Dale Griffin, Engalia, Bianca, and then Belinda McKinley, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Jean Marie Fries, Eighth Ward. I'm here today to voice my support for Kevin Brown and my utter disbelief and frustration with this city for his wrongful termination. Kevin is not someone I know on a personal basis. I only know of him through the results of the productive work he is doing in our city. This city owes him more than what you are dishing out for him. You have got to understand how this looks to the residents of this town. It feels like a concerted effort to railroad this man's career, and we've seen this before, haven't we? Yeah. You cannot possibly tell us with a straight face that you would terminate this man's job, his livelihood, because of some choices that his bosses made about how to pay parking tickets, which were questionable at best in the first place. Even if the concerns were legitimate, and even if there were some legitimate reason why he had never been disciplined in the past until he was fired, are you telling me that parking tickets matter more than the work this man has been doing? The people whose lives are changed by this work? Not to mention his own livelihood and family? What is this really about? It's despicable. It's disgusting. We can see right through your little charade. Shame on you.
Thank you, Jean Marie. Dale? Dale Griffin, come on up. Engalia, Bianca, Belinda McKinley, then Brittany Chapora. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dale Griffin. I'm an Evanston resident who has interacted with Kevin Brown over several years, and I ask you to reverse the process that terminated his employment with the city over parking issues. Many of we members of Unitarian Church of Evanston have admired and supported his department's work with at-risk youth and people returning from prison. I read the allegations and the rebuttal at issue. It seems to me that if a fraction of the effort that went into the allegations had been invested in personal contact and problem-solving, this would not even be an issue. That department does send people in and out all day to meet with citizens, and there needs to be some recognition of this. His work is very important, and the kind of extreme toxicity in handling a parking issue is detrimental to our community. Please do what is needed to get past this issue and back to the real work of the city of Evanston. Let's not lose this valuable city employee and leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dale. Engalia? And if I mispronounce your name, please pronounce it so everybody gets it. I'm sorry if I mispronounce anyone's name.
It's Angelia Bianca, but everyone just calls me Bianca. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I have been here before on similar issues with the Youth and Young Adult Program, so I'm going to be really quick. So my name is Angelia Bianca. I work at the University of Illinois. I am a community leader, an anti-violence activist, and an author. I literally travel around the world. I see violence in every single city in every country, and I know violence. I have had the opportunity, early on when this program was first implemented by the previous mayor with Kevin Brown, to work. In addition to my job, I worked part-time for the city of Evanston for the Youth and Young Adult Division to stop violence with their wonderful, brilliant team and Kevin Brown. I'm going to tell you right now on everything, and I, you know, I'm an educated woman here, I learned integrity from Kevin Brown. That's who I learned integrity. I am outraged, and to say that I'm devastated would be an understatement. Your Honor, you stated that the Youth and Young Adult Division is thriving, but it would not be thriving without Kevin Brown's leadership. I can guarantee you that. He has done an outstanding job. You also mentioned that in your statement that it's a personal matter, and I understand there's an investigation and you can't reveal all the details, but this is not personal. This is a public, we're talking parking tickets, speeding tickets, we're talking ticketing city employees, city vehicles. That is not a personal situation, right? So I'm going to ask not only that you reinstate Kevin Brown, but that you fix, you fix, the injustice brought upon him and the other city employees who have experienced this. And lastly, I know everyone's saying to call on an investigation. I would like to hope that you are going to do one, but I want that probe to include citywide number of city officials ticketed with city vehicles, and I want to know where, when, and I do data for a living at the University of Illinois. So I want the evaluation. I want to see how that looks. How many of color? How many are Black? How many brown, or how many are white? And what is their position as a role in the city when they're getting ticketed?
Thank you.
I am completely devastated. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but Mayor, like the man said, we all make mistakes. You all- You all have the power to fix this, and I urge you and demand, as a longtime advocate for the city of Evanston, that you fix this and bring the man back that made this program work, that we wouldn't be saving lives without him. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brenda, come on up. And sometimes I mispronounce words and things like that, just so everybody was clear, because I may have mispronounced it. It's personnel matter, right? Which is governed by personnel, not personal, because I mean, they're two different things. People say...
Thank you. Belinda McKinley.
No, 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 that's, I may have misstated it, yes.
To the city council and mayor, I'm here on behalf to show some support for Kevin Brown and the Youth and Young Adult Division of Evanston. I've worked with him for the past five years, five to seven years, and I've seen him so many times get young adults' jobs and employment. I've seen him help people in crisis, people that were homeless and people that needed help. I've seen this division and this department show up and show out, and they've done a wonderful job. I have a lot of respect for the Youth and Young Adult Division and for Kevin Brown and his leadership. I was really disgusted to hear that he was terminated. I think it is a travesty. I think it is personal, and I think it is of some kind of show of strength or support or, I don't know what it is, I just know it's wrong. I just know it's wrong. So please reinstate Kevin Brown. He's done a wonderful job with this department, and he built so much character and integrity. This is a good man, and you're making a huge mistake. So thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for coming out. Brittany Tapora, Darlene Cannon, then Nicolette Jones.
Hello, Brittany Tapora, Fifth Ward. Kevin Brown has been one of the most prolific chain agents in Evanston, especially for black and brown youth. Firing him is an unthinkable affront to those communities. The issues he is alleged to have participated in are ridiculous and demonstrate a gross incompetence by the city of Evanston and not by Mr. Brown. It makes no sense that the city has a practice of ticketing its own employees while they are working. Payments for these tickets were allowed for three years and have only recently come under scrutiny and then ended abruptly in termination. You have a responsibility to your community to put the needs, to put their needs above your own petty disagreements. I believe that the work Kevin Brown has done for Evanston youth and young adults is much more valuable than your 600 and some odd dollars and change, and an independent investigation must be done if you have any concern for justness.
Thank you, Brittany. Darlene, come on up. And then Nicolette Jones, and Anthony Jones, and Roger Williams.
Good evening. Darlene Cannon, Second Ward. Kevin Brown, a black man who has been tirelessly helping and mentoring black youth in Evanston, is fired over parking tickets. And then you, Mayor Hagerty, attempted to demonize him to residents as a bad person. The same practice you used with Clerk Reed, whom is an advocate for transparency, you have led people to believe that Clerk Reed was threatening two white women who are city attorneys. So you seem to have a pattern of verbalizing your content against certain black folks. No equity lens being used here. Evanston for some, not my mayor.
Thank you, Darlene. Nicolette Jones, and then we got Anthony Jones, then we got Roger Williams, then Priscilla Giles.
Hi. Hello. I'm here to stand in solidarity for the reinstatement of Kevin Brown. The thing about Kevin was he was a beacon of light in this community. He was good. He made Evanston better because he was here. So when I heard today that he was let go, I was in disbelief. I talked to my daughter, she said, "Mom, that good man." I said, "Yeah, that good man." I talked to my son, he said, "Politics." Then I come here and I realize that when they hired the assistant city manager, I mean, the interim city manager, I believe that was a mandate they put in place for her to let him go because Wally couldn't do it.
Thank you. Anthony Jones, we have Anthony Jones, then you Roger, then Roger Williams, then Priscilla Giles.
I'm speaking as somebody who Kevin helped employ. I worked at the Northwestern program under him, and ever since then, he's always been in communication with me for the last, like, three, four years. He'd always call me, call me. If you could see any job openings, I could help other people call me. So I'm here to, and he was always there to help me, so I'm here to help him. I don't think anybody in this room believes that you let a man go for $900. I don't think anybody believes that. There's other things at work, but I just got to be honest, do the right thing, give him his job back. That's all I'm here to say, you know?
Thank you. All right, Roger. And then Priscilla Giles, Rick Marsh, and then Grace Patino.
Good evening, city council, mayor. I'm Roger Williams, I'm the president of Opal. About 372 days ago, I was at the same position when the last play was made for Kevin Brown's job. That was 372 days ago. But the question that one must ask the mayor and the Evanston City Council, why do you fire the employment, why do you fire Kevin Brown, the Community Service Manager of the Youth and Young Adults Program? Has he committed some crime that has created embarrassment for the city? Has he cost Evanston tax dollars and lawsuits as some have in this city? Now, what is the issue in this case? Is the Community Service Manager payment of about nine parking tickets totaling about $800 in city parking fines on city vehicles parked in the civic center lot using the city credit card? One thing we ought to be aware of, the Youth and Young Adult Program is a very successful program. You wouldn't know it by what some of the things have been going on here. With a staff of only nine people, it serves the highest at-risk young people and their families in Evanston. It has assisted thousands of Evanston residents to secure job training and permanent employment, leading to careers in every workforce sector. But the greatest impact from the work of the Youth and Young Adult Program is a 219% decrease in total annual Evanston arrests for individuals ages 16 through 24 from 2012 to 2018, and a 246% increase in youth and young adult employment during the same time period. Its manager, Kevin Brown, has received high job performance evaluation each of his years. And in seven years, the Youth and Young Adults Program Division has won nine community awards. So, the question that I present to you, what's more important? $800 in disputed tickets or the continuation of a man's work and leadership that has provided hope and the future for thousands of at-risk youth and young adults in Evanston? I believe, we believe the thing to do is to reinstate Kevin Brown into his position. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Ms. Giles, come on up. And then we got Rick Marsh, then Grace Patino, then Liz Brevia.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The decisions have already been made, so beware if you have been praised by the city council or are black or brown, downtrodden, poor, and about to be poor. The decisions have already been made. Beware.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Rick, come on up. And then Grace Patino, Liz Brevia, and then Anthony Jones.
All right, good evening. My name is Rick Marsh. I live in the Eighth Ward. I'm the board president at Kurtz Cafe, and we work side by side with Kevin Brown and his outreach group. And, you know, for 35 years, I've been involved with the fam organization, you know, working with young folks. And pretty much in my volunteer life, in my 35 years here in Evanston, I've worked with young folks in helping to develop them. So I'm a witness to see the benefits that come from this type of work. You know, Kevin and his outreach team, they meet our youth where they are, and they make a difference. I started at Kurtz as a mentor, and when you put time and effort and caring into young people, you make a difference. And Kevin has made a difference in this community. There's absolutely no question about it. Now, I've also worked in corporate America for 35 years, and I've managed teams, and I've terminated people. This is not the way you terminate someone. This is, this is pretty shoddy, I'd have to say. So with that being said, I'm here in support of Kevin Brown. Hopefully, you all make the right decision and reinstate him back into his job so he can continue to do the good work that he's been doing here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Grace? And then Liz Brevia, Anthony Jones, and Nicolette Jones. I think I did Anthony and Nicolette. All right, we're cutting our list down here. Okay, welcome.
Hi, I'm Grace Patino, and I was born and raised in Evanston. I'm here to voice my support for Kevin Brown tonight and my dissent for his firing. The restorative work that Kevin Brown and the Youth and Young Adult Division do should be of utmost priority to the city if the city truly values all of its residents, particularly its working-class, black and brown, and young adult residents. The circumstances of the firing are extremely suspect. I urge you to instate a thorough independent investigation to the circumstances of the firing, the allegations of singling out the Parks and Rec Youth and Young Adult employees for ticketing, and I urge you to make the process of the investigation as transparent as possible. And I would lastly like to say that I believe it's an undue burden to not allow city employees to park in the parking lot while working on the clock. And I genuinely wonder where all of you parked tonight, because it's cold, and I know that this meeting has been going on for longer than two hours. So, thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Liz, come on up. And then we've got Char Henry, and then Kathleen McMahon.
Hi, I'm Liz Brevia. I am a mother of seven kids and teacher in District 65 and coach at ETHS. Shame on the city of Evanston for wasting time and energy on the effort to terminate Kevin Brown's employment with the city. I would like to know if you've spent the same amount of time commending him on everything he has done to improve the lives of young people across our community. The positive domino effect of Kevin's efforts since he was hired at the city in 2012 cannot be calculated. The impact that he has as a leader, guiding and coaching his staff, the impact the programs he has created have had on the young people in our community? He doesn't just sit behind a desk and boss people around. He is passionate and dedicated and makes a difference in thousands of lives, and you want to fire him for a petty reason. I would like to ask you what you stand for. I tell my children and my students and my players two things. First of all, when you are perfect, then you can start talking about other people. The second thing is, that I tell them, is worry about yourself. Please ask yourself, are you doing the best job? Are you dedicated to your craft? Are you making a positive difference? Are we focusing on parks or parking tickets? I would also ask, what are the unintended or intended consequences of this maneuver? Who will be affected? The people who will be most affected are our neediest in our community, and how does that sit with you?
Thank you, Grace. Char? Come on up. Char Henry, then Kathleen McMahon, then Bennett Johnson, then Ken Westbrooks.
Good evening, city council. Thanks for allowing us to come here and speak. I was born in Evanston. I moved from Evanston about 20 years ago. I came back because I love Evanston. The first person that I was directed to speak with was Kevin Brown. When I went into that office, I was amazed. His team, they were tight. They helped me in every way that they could. While he was helping me, he was mentoring them, because everyone in that room was younger than me. These were people that I know that grew up in my community, that do my family. So me, as an Evanston resident, I love this city. And to see what has happened, I got this call two days ago, and when I got this call, I sounded the alarm, because this is ridiculous. This is something where you really are asking the question, what is this really about? This really appears to be personal, and we've got to be bigger. We've got to be bigger. We've got to continue to be an example. I'm proud of Evanston. Evanston is a great city. In my 45-plus years of living, I have seldom, I've only one time seen somebody laying out homeless in this city. Evanston takes care of its residents. You have to take care of your children. If you do not take care of the village, the village will take care of you. They will crawl into your windows and they will take care of you. And when you take somebody's job, you better be quick to think about when your job can be taken away from you. Your livelihood can be taken from you, because we all have children. Thank you. Hire that man back.
Thank you, Kathleen. Excuse me. Thank you, Char. And now we've got Kathleen, come on up. Then Bennett Johnson, then Ken Westbrooks, and then Rudy Mayo.
Hi there. My name is Kathleen McCann. I'm not familiar with the work that Kevin Brown does in his capacity with Evanston youth. I am just, I just found out about this and wanted to comment from the standpoint of parking. I know that parking is a fraught issue in Evanston. It's something that people are mad about. There's always a lot of drama about parking. And then there's also a lot of scrutiny on public employees and public employee activity. And so I guess I understand why there would be some sensitivity around parking, but I can't understand why it would justify this man losing his job. And I can, I could just imagine perhaps that there's a hypersensitivity about parking tickets or something, and that the rules that apply to citizens need to apply to everyone. I mean, I can't imagine, I'm trying to imagine a reason that would justify the guy getting fired around parking tickets. And I just want to say, as somebody who's aware of the sensitivity of the issue, I hope that you will reconsider and fix this. It is a personnel matter, and you have the ability to fix it, and I would encourage you to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Bennett, come on up, Bennett. Then we got Ken Westbrooks, Rudy Mayo, and then Gary Cull.
Mr. Mayor, city clerk, members of the council, citizens, I want to define the word corrupt. It's a perversion of integrity by an individual government body for an inducement. The two strongest inducements in this country are money and race. When we look at what's been happening over the past few years where, short time rather, shorter than that, with the city council, we had first, as was indicated earlier, the elimination of the Youth and Young Adults Division. We had the problem of the Harley Clark demolition. We had the Northwestern University controversy. And then finally, today, the Kevin Brown dismissal, meaning that, as you can see, a lot of your fellow citizens, because again, this is Republican form of government. You represent people, not only yourself, and you're supposed to use your best judgment to represent people with integrity. And with strong community support and the vagueness of this whole issue, you should look at it again, because, well, let me be clear again, I have had experience with, on the west side of Chicago, working with so-called gangs, and they were real gangs back then. And I know the problems and what it takes to control these kids, and we should be glad this man has reduced the costs and saved lives. And we should not be, it's not a personnel matter, it's a personnel matter regarding antagonism between Mr. Brown and Mr. Hemingway. And we should look at it like that and do something about it and not be caught up in corrupting. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. We've got five more speakers. We've got Ken Westbrooks, Rudy Mayo, Gary Cull, Rob Presser. Apologize if I mispronounced him, then Pastor Neighbors.
Mayor Hagerty, I ask if I can speak at the end of public comment?
Are you going to speak? You want to speak up there at public comment? We're not, we're not, as a courtesy, Clerk Reed, I'll put you on before Pastor Neighbors, okay? After Rob Presser, okay? From the podium. Okay. Ken, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and stand and speak on behalf of Kevin Brown, and we believe that this opportunity to speak and get real, true transparency, if someone said something about racial equity, but we've been doing something about understanding institutional racism, and I think what we want to understand is, can we get the truth about what's really happening here? Because no one believes, no one believes parking tickets is the issue. If there's an issue, it's always a personnel issue undisclosed when we terminate black men. It's always undisclosed when we eliminate black people. We always have it undisclosed when we deal with the lives of black youth. It's always undisclosed when we turn our backs on the people in this community. It's always undisclosed. Well, you're going to have to disclose it eventually. You're going to have to explain what's going on, and you're going to have to share what's happening, because the people that are going to be lying in the streets, you're going to have to disclose why they're there and why you put them there.
Thank you. Thank you. Rudy, we have Rudy Mayo. Come on up, Rudy. Then Gary Cull, then Rob Pressoir.
Hi. Got our Evanston basketball staff with us here. We'll keep it short. Got about 20 seconds for each of us, so we'll all be up here together explaining our case. So, my name is Rudy Mayo. I'm an Evanston resident. I'm senior accountant for District 202, high school boys' basketball coach, and director of Evanston Feeder and Hoop Avenue. Our program services more than 400 kids annually in the city of Evanston. I'm here today on behalf of Kevin Brown. He has a unique ability to emphasize with those in need. He has become aware of the need of male mentorship in our community. He does more than what is asked of him. For example, he had a troubled, we had a troubled youth whom was dealing with a ton of adversity recently. He needed another route, another scenery. Kevin took the two of us and introduced him and I to an opportunity that would change his life forever. This meant taking an entire weekend simply to mentor this child and show him that there is hope for him. He truly makes our city a better place. His spirit of mentorship, volunteerism, is a natural part of his life. And for that, I can't imagine this community without him. I'm shocked, and I ask that you guys please reconsider this.
Thank you, Rudy.
Nikas Mayne, I'm also one of the basketball coaches at Evanston. And you know what? This, we're not, we're here in support of Kevin, but most importantly, we're here for the kids that Kevin served. Kevin is a, Kevin is a high-character guy. He's a man of integrity. And honestly, at 36-years-old and a job that I work at the high school, dealing with kids on a daily basis, Kevin has not only been a leader, he's been a mentor for myself. And being a Black man, I appreciate Kevin for the things that he's done, the work that he's done around our community and for our kids. If it wasn't for Kevin, because I've witnessed it firsthand, I've witnessed it two, three weeks ago where on our front campus at the high school, there were a group of unruly kids that we were having a hard time getting through to. And if it wasn't for Kevin and his staff to be there on the scene at that time, like they are every day at this missile at Evanston Township, to make sure that they're reaching out and helping these kids get to and from school, Kevin and his staff were there and they helped out the Evanston police to make sure that they didn't arrest some of our kids and throw them in a paddy wagon.
Thank you, Liz.
Now, if we as a community can't come together and find an alternative solution for this situation, we're doing our kids a disservice. We're doing our kids and our community a disservice. Because Kevin and his staff has been a great resource and an asset to this city.
Thank you. All right. I'm just giving you each a minute ten as if you were signed up, so.
Okay, I'm actually signed up, so you could cross my name after that.
Are you Rob?
So, I'm Rob Pressoir. So, yes, so good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rob Pressoir. I was born and raised in Evanston. In my free time, I do work with these individuals, coaching basketball, and the director of kind of the Evanston Youth Program that has been serving our youth over the last eight years. Kevin has offered his time off-hours to help ensure we stay relevant as an Evanston program that serves our youth. He's given us help off-hours with fundraising support, grant writing, and access to Youth and Young Adult and the Youth and Young Adult Program. But part of what makes Kevin great is he's a forward thinker, he's very calculated, he's thorough and courageous. He's unapologetic about what he believes is right, especially as it relates to the disenfranchised and understerved. Our community needs a voice like Kevin. His leadership cannot be understated in this community. Please reverse this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Hi, my name is Stacy Marani Jr. I coach basketball at Evanston. I also am involved in the community in helping these kids. My dad also works for his team. Kevin Brown is an outstanding guy. He helped me out a lot when I was coming out from playing basketball overseas. He also gave me a job for a little while until I found my way. He also gave my dad an opportunity to change lives. This guy is remarkable. I can't put into words what he has done for our kids, giving them jobs in the summer, getting them off the street. Like, this is ridiculous what y'all are doing to this man. Get this man his job back.
Thank you, Stacy. All right. We've got Gary. Gary Cull, you're up, and then Clerk Reed, you'll be after him. Devon, down at the podium.
Yeah, I am Gary Cull, and I really thought I was done, but I actually was having dinner today when I, somebody told me that you were actually doing this or somebody had done this. And it's inconceivable to me that, somebody said it was 372 days ago, that these same people came out as eloquently then as they have now and said the same thing to save a program, but it's not really about the program. It probably wasn't about the program before either. It's about Kevin Brown. And I say, and now I will say, as a criminal court judge in Maywood, I would give a lot to have somebody like Kevin Brown and the young men that he's mentored to have in my communities, in the communities that I service out there, so that they would not be in my courtroom, so they would not be dead on the streets. And if you don't think he really provides that service, go out on the street one day. Just go out there and see what he does. See what they do. See who they are. And some of the kids that work with him are kids that I've known since they were five and six-years-old, and I could not be more proud of them. So, don't do this to Kevin because it really is a terrible, terrible example to the kids who believe in him, the community that has eloquently supported him here, and you should support him.
Thank you, thank you, Gary. All right. Devon Reed, my timekeeper, my timekeeper, your timekeeper's up there. But you know, a minute ten, and then I've got Pastor Neighbors to wrap it up.
I'll keep the time on myself. Thank you, sir. So, those of you who show up to council, I'm really speaking toward you folks. Those of you who show up to council on a regular basis know that I'm somewhat of a stickler for the rules. And one of my favorite quotes is from one of our great presidents, Theodore Roosevelt. He says, "Rules are not necessarily sacred, principles are." The decision that has been made regarding Kevin Brown doesn't reflect our principles, nor does it reflect our rules. And that is the concern that I have. I rise today because I, on my door, as I walk out of my apartment, I have the Thine Eulog that we signed to transmit to this city greater than we inherited it. And I remind myself of that every day. And my concern here is that we do, we have seen a pattern in this city of racial inequity. We've seen a pattern of folks who speak out against racism and call out the city being systematically, systemically fired and terminated. And I think we have a duty to address this. And one of the things I must say is, is the council and the mayor do not have the authority, and I'm at time, give me a second, the council and the mayor do not have the authority to hire or fire staff. That is the city manager's responsibility. Ms. Dorley, I think you are a great interim city manager, and I'm glad you're in the position. But one of the things that we must do as citizens is rethink the foundation of our government. Rethink whether a city manager form of government is what we want. We should be able to hold our elected officials more directly accountable to decisions that are made here in this city.
Thank you, Devon.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Pastor Neighbors, we're going to ask you to bring us home on the public comment tonight, so, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of City Council. I do want to say, on behalf of all of those persons who have spoken, everything has already been said. You know, the love that is being exemplified and shown regarding Kevin Brown coming from so many sectors of our community, white, black, young, old, male, female, those who are employed, those who are not employed, folks that Kevin has touched in an individual way, and others that don't even know him in a personal way. So, I'm convinced that you all know about the character of Kevin and that this gathering tonight may have less to do with his character than something else altogether. I don't know what it is. Part of the problem, I think, of being a member of the community is knowing when something like this happens, you only have part of the story, you don't have the whole story. But I was looking at you all individually as all of those wonderful sentiments were being given, and I'm sorry to say you all because I think you did beautiful. I don't think anything has changed. I think that the general sentiment that exists, that came into the room, is a sentiment that exists right now. And so, I do want to say this. I think that Kevin Brown's reputation has already been sullied. I don't think that can be taken back. I think that whatever the results are with regard to what's going to happen over this 10-day appeal period, you cannot take back the reputation that has been sullied about Kevin Brown. And so, part of my concern is, I do not believe that the city is going to rehire Kevin Brown. I hope so. I'm a preacher. I pray so. But I will also say this, if that is not the case, Kevin Brown remains one of the most outstanding young men that I have ever met and had the privilege to be with. And so, I want to say that if the city makes the decision not to rehire Kevin Brown, everybody that has spoken tonight, that has resources, that has capacity, we cannot let this man leave our city. If we have to create a new job for Kevin Brown, we have to do it, and we can do it in spite of what happens tonight.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking, and speaking, and speaking from the heart. We're now going to move to call of the wards. Call of the wards, Alderman Fleming.
So, I have a few things to say. First, let me do my business of the city, which is I have some referrals. So, the first one is to the Affordable Housing Committee, or to the Affordable Housing Plan, whatever we call it, when we all meet and talk about affordable housing. I'd like us to have an agenda item to waive the city fees, or to think about waiving the city fees for accessory dwelling units that owners are going to build and keep affordable. My second referral is to Human Services, and I think I made this one already, but for us to look at the HR employee manual. The third one is for Economic Development. I have lots of frustration by the money that we give to larger business owners but not small business owners. So, I'd like to look at how we can support small business owners in some kind of incubator shared space that they can do, you know, sell their products in a space together. And then my third is not a referral, but an announcement. I had to cancel my ward meeting that was scheduled for the 20th due to a conflict with another meeting. So, I will be having our annual Ninth Ward Holiday Party and Coat Drive. It's going to be on Friday, the 13th of December at 6:00 PM over at St. Nick's. An email went out today. So, as always, you can bring a holiday dessert to share with other residents in the ward, but the requirement is you bring a coat that will go to one of the school's shoot dolls or Oakden. So, those are my official announcements. So, my personal announcements are that I hear you all, despite Pastor Neighbors' proclamation that my face doesn't say so, I worked very hard on my poker face, I do hear you. Kevin is a dear friend of mine, so all personal bias out there, I think he's a great guy as well. I'm also frustrated by this decision. The clerk has explained to you what our role is at City Council. I have told the previous city manager and the current city manager, I would love to be in charge of HR, but that is not the job that I have now. My job is to hold accountable those folks who make these decisions. So, I am not consulted when we are hiring nor firing staff, which is a frustration of mine, but it's a position that I have. What I will say is that as I have pushed for racial equity, as I ran for this seat, to talk about racial equity, I did not think it would be this hard from my seat. I thought being in this seat, you would have a little more influence. And I'm learning that it's not as fast as I thought. So, as much as I want us to get there, we are not there. It is slow, hard, painful work. I don't know if we will achieve it before my term is over, if I'm being honest. And I am all for the rules. I am a rule follower, but I always object when the rules have to start with Black folks. I will always stand up for the rules. I will always tell people, even my friends, if I think that they're out of line, but the rules have to apply across the board. And whenever the rules, in my opinion, sway one way, whether it's race or gender, they're not really rules, right? Worth their preferences. So, I will just say that I share your frustration. I also need to earn $20 from Alderman Braithwaite and play two seconds of this song that is my favorite. Put it up just right for you, but I hear you. And my last thing is, as much as you don't like me or anyone else or feel frustrated by these decisions, I challenge you to run for office. That is how you make a difference, and it is hard and painful and thankless, and you make no money. But if you don't like anyone, including myself, run for office. Or get your friends to run for office because it's hard to make change from your side, and it's a lot of work, and everyone doesn't want to come here. And so, that's my challenge to you, regardless of what happens with Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, for the city business, I'd just like to make a referral. Last, two weeks ago at our CBDG meeting, we had two organizations that, based on a few reasons, they weren't able to submit their applications. So, at our next appropriate city council meeting, city manager, I'd like to revisit that so that for those that are in support of the organizations, we can make a decision. So, however it needs to come back to the city council, I would like for that referral to be acted on. To those that stayed behind and for those that will, you know, watch this video, I am always moved whenever we, meaning our Black community, comes out. So, I just want to thank you all and for the, in addition to the Blacks, just the community in general, particularly on this issue. And so, I speak from a place not about the personnel issue, but for those who really articulated the concerns of our community in such a respectful way. And I hope that you continue to come back until we get this matter resolved because for me, this is not a personnel issue. It's really deeper, and it speaks to the community, our values, and more importantly, our Black children. So, thank you all so much from my seat. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Witten. Call of the wards. If you have anything.
No report.
All right. Alderman Wilson.
Like Alderman Braithwaite said, I also appreciate those who come out, and what you have to say is important to us. This is one of those opportunities that we get. And, you know, without, you know, addressing the specifics, rules exist for reasons. However, rules have to evolve, and rules have to sometimes change. So, I think what's instructive for us is, you know, we listen to what people have to say, and, you know, Alderman Fleming kind of identified the fact that we expect the people who are doing the work to follow the rules, and we expect those at the dais to evaluate how it all works. So, it's on us to see whether it's working or whether it's not working, and it's on us to make, you know, that evolutionary change. So, that's, I accept responsibility for that going forward, and I think we all take it seriously, and I think that that's what we're all aspiring to do, the nine of us and the mayor from this, from these seats. So, I continue to, I expect to continue with that work, and hopefully we can make, continue to make positive changes.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman, citizens.
Thank you. I just want to celebrate the work of the Youth and Young Adult Department, Kevin Brown's work with everyone that had comment today. I don't think that can be argued with anyone. And I want to share my frustration in the way this is managed and not able to speak to it. With that said, I'm hopeful that our community can be comfortable and trust that every member of City Council is doing the very best that they know how from their lived experience, and that we will continue providing the necessary services of the Youth and Young Adult Department. And I'm disappointed to hear Pastor Neighbors suggest that we aren't responding. We can't respond. It's not an exchange. So, I want you to know that you are being heard. I listen to you. I read every email, but when I'm unable to respond with any new information, I choose not. not to. So know that I've read all of your emails, but it is a personnel matter, and the way the policy works is we just can't discuss it. So I'm certain that more information will come out about this, but please do feel confident that our city staff and our city leadership is committed to providing the services that you all have spoke so eloquently about. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Sufferden. Okay, Alderman Ravel. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. We do not have executive session this evening, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I can't imagine anyone's opposed. Thank you, everybody, for turning out for the City Council meeting. We will see you next Monday on November 25th.